Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call the special meeting for Tuesday, November 15th, to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wirick?
Here.
Mayor Blatts?
Here. And if I could have Councilman Lara lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on our agenda is time for presentations, and we do have two tonight, but I had one thing that I wanted to say, and then Councilman Lara wanted to say something as well. One of the interesting things as I walked through neighborhoods for the election was I had maybe a half a dozen people say to me, "Why doesn't the city council start their meetings off with something inspirational?" And then -- so I thought about that. And then I was contacted directly by Byron Rosen, who said the same thing, and said, "You know, it would be really nice to start the meeting off with something inspirational." So I gave it some thought, and I thought, "Yeah, that would be nice." So at least for the next two meetings that I'm presiding over, I thought that I'd start us off with something. So the first one that I'm going to say, this is from Buddha. "The secret of health for both mind and body is not to mourn for the past, not to worry about the future, but to live the present moment wisely and earnestly." And that's by Buddha. Okay? Sounds very inspirational to me. I'm inspired. Councilman Lara?
Wow, that's a great segue into what I wanted to say. Thank you for that, Mayor Blatts. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you. I know we have a lot of agendas, so I don't want to keep you or a lot of important issues. But I just wanted to express, I know probably many of you, my mom passed away about six years ago. She was about forty-two, no, sixty-two. And today is her birthday, actually. Today is the day of her birthday. She would have been sixty-eight. I just want to recognize her because she always had the tradition of celebrating your birthday on the day of. It didn't matter if it was a Monday, Tuesday. She always had that tradition. And it's a great segue of what Mayor Blatts says because she did, she was all about living in the present. And I just want to recognize her, and I want to say a couple words in Spanish. "Amá la quiero mucho. Quiero saber que aunque no esté aquí físicamente, sé que está aquí en espíritu, en mi alma, en todos. Le quiero agradecer que todo lo que nos ha enseñado, todo lo que sigue y continúa enseñando para mí y mis hijos. Aunque no esté aquí presente, está siempre en nuestro corazón. Y feliz día de sus santos. La quiero mucho." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our first presentation is going to be by Angelo tonight. Angelo, there you are. Come on up, as we're going to start off with a couple of presentations having to do with water. Good evening.
Good evening. I think we need the TVs on.
Okay, and we'll fire them up for you.
I was here about a month ago talking about water in the Ojai Valley, and tonight is just kind of an update on things that have gone on the past, the past month. This is a chart that I've used every time I've been here. I'd like to remind you all of the fall in Lake Casitas storage, starting about 2012, when our rainfall averaged below ten inches a year in downtown Ojai. And that fall was around 25,000 acre feet. And so long as that kind of rainfall continues, we can expect that kind of drop in the lake. Not much has changed this past month, and I'll get into that. As of October 31st, the total storage in the lake was about 36 percent of capacity, assuming that there's no sediment in the lake, around 91,500 acre feet. The October decrease in storage was around 1,880 acre feet, and if you annualize that out for the year, it comes out around 22,500 acre feet for the year. So far as the demand reduction stages are concerned, I believe we're still looking at stage four coming on in September of 2017 at 75,000 acre feet. And that reduction stage is an additional 10 percent of conservation from where we are now. We're at 30 percent now, 30 percent below 2013 water use levels. Stage five still looks like March of 2018, which will come on at 65,000 acre feet, and that's where we go to 50 percent reduction in water use, and that's the most severe stage. And in talking with Casitas, I think they're pretty nervous about stage five hitting because it's going to be, it's going to be a severe situation, and a lot of things are in the week. The Water Efficiency and Allocation Program that Casitas publishes specifies some pretty serious cutbacks when you hit stage five. Out of water time, if things continue the way they are with rainfall, and all of this is based on the fact that the rainfall continues at about the same pace. So the out-of-water time is about April 20 of '21, which is around four-plus years. If things continue the way they are, that the lake will be out of water. Here's the chart of the Ojai Basin. I was just speaking with Jordan Keir, and he's going to have some updated information about this. Right now, it's, well, I can't say "right now" because I think he has updated information, but it's around 45 percent capacity, 37,400 acre feet. And the recharge mechanism largely for the basin is rain. Outflow from the basin is pumping from private wells, pumping for Ojai City use by Golden State, and discharge to San Antonio Creek. Discharge to San Antonio Creek occurs all the time, no matter, well, I'm going to say it's occurring right now, even at our current drought situation, at around two acre feet per day, which I believe is significant for a drought condition. That's over 700 acre feet a year that's still running out of the basin, even though we're in a drought condition. Now, we have inflow to the basin that comes underground, that does, that is not associated with rain necessarily. So there is replenishment going on for the water that's going to San Antonio Creek. The, calculating the amount of water in the basin is a complicated, complicated deal. And again, I was just speaking with Jordan about this, and he gave me a brief introduction to some of the formulae required to come up with the estimate of groundwater storage in the basin. This is a cross-section of the basin from one of Jordan's reports. And the green, the green portion is called an aquitard, which is a layer that restricts water flow through the basin. The white portions are alluvial deposits that actually contain the water. So if you look at this cross-section, and I think it's about midway in the basin, looking toward the west, it gets complicated because there are different layers in the basin that hold water. Another chart, this is kind of like a topographic map of the basin, and it shows the different levels to water in the basin. So if you combine these lines that show a distance to water in the basin with that previous chart, you get a three-dimensional image that gets pretty, pretty complicated. So the basin, I'm learning as time goes on, the basin is a complicated, complicated situation, and certainly can't be taken for granted, nor quickly estimated about how much water is in the basin. The upper Ventura River groundwater basin is at a near-record-low level. Things you knew before, there are 149 wells total in the basin, and two agencies pumping water out of the basin are trying to. Ventura River Water District has four wells, and only one is pumping out of the basin now. Miners Oaks Water District has four wells in the basin, and none are pumping. Ventura River Water, just recently, as I understand it, has gone back on their well completely for supplying their customers. They were drawing Casitas water to supplement their supply, but now they're back on that one well entirely for their customers. Miners Oaks is entirely on Casitas water for, for their customers. Their wells are not deep enough to get down to the aquifer, which, again, is at a near-record-low level. Something I was curious about is how much water does the Ojai Valley actually use. I picked this year, July 1st, 2015, to June 30th, 2016. During that period of time, Casitas sold 14,345 acre feet. Where did those, where did that water go? 3,776 acre feet went to Ventura. 493 acre feet I couldn't identify precisely, but I believe it goes to some miscellaneous users, perhaps down toward Casita Springs, that I could not get a handle on. A surprising amount of water, 2,288 acre feet per year during this period of time, went to the Highway 150 farms west of Casitas. A lot of avocado growers along 150. That water goes along 150, makes a U-turn, comes down the hill, and then comes back up the Rincon to supply those homes along the Rincon. So that's a surprising amount of water. To me, it was surprising to see that much water that goes to Highway 150 and the Rincon area. You subtract these numbers out, and it appears that CMD actually moved about 7,780 acre feet to the Ojai Valley. So I moved that over to the right column. During that period of time, the Ojai Basin extracted about 3,300 acre feet, and the wells, when they could pump water during that period of time, that's the amount of water the wells pumped. So we come up with a grand total of a little over 12,000 acre feet that the Ojai Valley used during that period of time. So this benchmark is going to change from year to year. It's not going to be necessarily exactly 1,200 acre feet that we need absolutely every year, but this is an idea, a scale of magnitude of how much water we need for the Ojai Valley. A side point down at the bottom, you'll see that during this period of time, the lake decreased by a volume of 21,000, a little over 21,000 acre feet. So obviously, we have a large discrepancy between the lake going down by 21,000 acre feet and Casitas only selling 14,000 acre feet. Well, the balance of that water, 6,790 acre feet, that went to evaporation. So if you look at the numbers, you've got over 6,000 of acre feet going to evaporation while you're selling 14,000 acre feet. So roughly 14,000, or, I'm sorry, 40 percent of the water sold was lost to evaporation. If you want to pick a number to concentrate on, I would look at that 7,700 acre feet, roughly 8,000 acre feet. If Lake Casitas goes dry, that's where we've got to find 8,000 acre feet of water for the Ojai Valley. Even during these conditions, the basins seem to be pumping okay, so I think for planning purposes, the basins under these conditions could keep up with their contribution, namely the 3,321, the 782, and the 418. So if the basins keep that up, we've still got to come up with another 8,000 acre feet of water if the lake goes dry. Where is that water going to come from is, is a great question. I mentioned the last meeting, the sediment study. Again, if there's sediment in the lake, the perceived volume in the lake is decreased by the amount of sediment in the lake. Casitas did send out a request for proposals. All the proposals were submitted due back in November 10th. I don't know if they finished evaluation of the proposals, but in my last talk with Casitas, that decision on selecting a contractor and funding that contractor should come before the November 23rd Casitas Board meeting. So that's, that's a meeting to circle on your calendar if you want to stop by and see how it goes, whether or not the board approves funding for the sediment study. That's the last hoop that'll need to be jumped through. So diversifying water sources, where can we look for water? Here are some points that we came up with. Rain coupled with stormwater capture, the state water project tie-in, which I talked about last time. We have a new item on the list called horizontal bores, and a great acronym for that, they're called HOBOs. And this came up as a result of a study funded by Casitas. There were 18 points submitted for study, and this horizontal bores, the HOBOs, came out, I believe, to be number one on the study. Another water source could be desalination or desalting. There are potentially new subsurface water sources that are being talked about now, and then, of course, there's affluent recycling. Stormwater capture, I think in the next couple of months, we're going to see the city of Ojai is going to be taking a larger role in stormwater capture. There's some, there's some actions going on now where I think we're going to see more planning and implementation, along with other groups in Ojai, to come up with some more movement towards stormwater capture in the Ojai Valley. A lot of water is lost down San Antonio Creek. All of the hard runoff areas in, in the city of Ojai basically run to San Antonio Creek south of us, and when it hits San Antonio Creek in that area, it's pretty much beyond capture of the Ojai Basin. So it's basically water that runs to the Ventura River. State Water Project tie-in, a couple of new wrinkles here. Here's a diagram that I went through before, just a refresher. The 30-inch line on the left-hand side of the chart is an existing 30-inch line from the Casitas filtration plant down to west Ventura, two or three blocks from the Ventura Mission. The piping we're talking about is that red blob in the center, seven miles of new piping that's going to go east to the Cuyegus system to tie into their lines. We've got some new information back, or some corroborating information back because of this Casitas study, that chances are that connection at Highway 118 and Price Road is going to have not enough capability to, to really supply water like Ventura, and ideally Casitas would like to have. So a couple of things going on there. Cuyegus has offered to increase that 24-inch line to a larger line to handle more capacity. And then there's the option of going three miles further east to tie into the two 30-inch lines that, that Cuyegus has. So that is the State Water Project tie-in. You see, to the left is a new entry, the seven miles of 30-inch pipe. That piping is a result of some capital improvement programs that I just found that exist in the city of Ventura. And the stated purpose for these transmission lines is, or for these new capital improvement lines, is transmission pipe for providing groundwater to the west side in the event both Ventura River and Casitas do not provide adequate water supplies. So the city of Ventura is off and running here, already planning on larger east-to-west lines through the city from, you can see on the chart, these, this seven miles of 30-inch pipe would be from Saticoy running west, and it'll get to within about three miles of our line, I say "our" line, the Casitas line that ends up at Olive and Ramona. So the capital improvement programs were for basically, let's see, you add up the numbers, you see 14,500 feet of 30-inch pipe in the one CIP, and 5,500 feet of 30-inch pipe in the other CIP. So we're looking at about 20,000 feet of new line that's in planning right now by the city of Ventura. So it makes me think, well, gee, what is the city of Ventura thinking? Well, they're thinking ahead. If, if Casitas goes dry, they want to be able to supply water to west Ventura, because right now, west Ventura water is coming from Casitas at around 4,000 acre feet a year. So the city of Ventura is moving ahead with the 30-inch line, and, and my contention from the beginning, I think, and I believe some others, have been that why don't we just run a 30-inch line across the Santa Clara River and hook into the 30-inch lines at Cuyegus? Why, if we're going to go to a smaller line, why, why install a choke point across the Santa Clara River when Ventura is putting in, putting in 20,000 feet of 30-inch line as we speak? So anyway, that's a subject for further discussion. Getting to the Matilah Formation Horizontal Bores, or HOBOs, I love that acronym. This was a chart that you've seen before. In the geography here, the San Yenés Mountains, north of Lake Casitas, and on the other side, the Matilah Canyon to the right, and the San Yenés River Valley to the left. The Matilah Formation Horizontal Bores concept is a result of, of information gleaned from drilling the Teca Lodi Tunnel. I don't know if you're acquainted with the Teca Lodi Tunnel or not, but it was a massive tunnel undertaking between the city of Santa Barbara and Lake Kachuma to put a tunnel in to be able to pull water from Lake Kachuma to the city of Santa Barbara. During drilling of that tunnel, and I've read a 1960 Bureau of Reclamation report, that is basically a foot-by-foot diary of what it was like to, to drill that horizontal well through the, through the mountains. It's really an interesting study, some interesting pictures. What they ran into during that drilling, they ran into some massive amounts of water came out of that tunnel when they reached a certain sandstone formation. And I'm not a hydrogeologist, so I can't really speak all of the right buzzwords about the sandstone, but it was a Matilah sandstone, and it is believed that the same kind of sandstone is present, water-bearing sandstone is present in these San Yenés Mountains. So the proposal was for horizontal bores, horizontal wells, to go into these mountains north of Lake Casitas, and hopefully find in these formations the same quantities of water that is simply residing in these formations that could be tapped and either piped to or drained down the creeks into Lake Casitas. The, the cost estimates range, well, cost estimates are about $5.6 million per well. Project time is about five years. Yield is maybe 8,000 acre feet per well, so a pretty good yield. Storage estimates are, get, get to be rather large, range from 29,000 to 200,000 acre feet, maybe residing in, in these mountains. So at this point in time, the, the Casitas Board has authorized an exploratory study to see if we can find out more definitive information about this potential, and hopefully find it out in sooner than, sooner than five years. So there's definitely more to come about this project. Desalination, we've talked about that before. There's a great, great meeting going on in the supervisor's quarters on December 1st. Anybody curious about desalination would want to, want to attend that meeting. One of the presenters is going to be Cuyegus. I don't know what, what Susan Mulligan is going to present exactly, but this is a presentation that exists, that, that she has given, and this particular study was for a plant near Port Winamey producing about 90,000 acre feet per year. The capital cost is going to be around 2.3 billion, and it was going to take 15 to 20 years to complete. So obvious, obviously, this is a way, way out there for planning, and Cuyegus makes no bones about it, this is an extremely difficult technological problem, and the permitting process is huge. So permitting, preventing takes up most of that 15 to 20 years, simply because of the hoops that have to be jumped through. But again, this is a water supply that's not dependent on rain or the state water project. Desalting is another subject that, and the difference between desalting and desalination is the degree of concentrates in the water. Brackish water is much, much less salty. You could consider the factor of 10 to 1, less salty than seawater. So it's significantly less expensive to purify brackish water than it is to desalinate seawater. Part of this Casitas study was for an Ojai desalter, because it's believed that some of the water in the Ojai Basin at some depths is brackish. So the proposal was brought up, it was not a high-level proposal, but I wanted to mention it because it was brought up as, for an Ojai desalter. They're talking about a location in the west-central basin for aquifers below 500 feet that may be brackish. This desalter would pull that water up, purify the water, and the, and would discharge the leftover brine into the, into the Ojai Valley sanitation system. Estimated cost for this system is 2.6 to 2.9 million dollars, and it would take a year to complete. And even though this was a lower priority system, I wanted to bring this up just to show you what's going on, to let you know what's going on in the Oxnard Plain so far as desalting is concerned, if you're not acquainted with it. You can see the legend to the right, but that, the particular line that run, that weaves its way through is, is a salinity management pipeline that's being built by Cuyegus. And I think Cuyegus is really a forward-thinking group of people, and, and they're building this line so that the brine from these desalting plants can be pumped out to the ocean. Now, that outfall line exists. The Oxnard Advanced Water Purification Facility and the Brackish Water Facility, they exist. If you go up the road a little bit more, the Round Mountain Water Treatment Plant and the Camrosa Water Reclamation Facility both exist, I believe. The treatment plant, for sure, that's a desalting plant that exists at Round Mountain. That is online. And all of these other desalters you see in the system are in various stages of planning. So the Oxnard Plain has a, has a serious brackish water problem, and they really are forward-thinking and taking steps to, to attack that problem. Lot of desalting facilities in the plan with Cuyegus backing them up with a line to get rid of the concentrate. There is talk about new subsurface water sources in the Ojai Valley. That potential is currently being explored. There is a theory about certain aquifers in mountain canyons that haven't been tapped yet, perhaps water along fault lines, perhaps water in the Ventura River corridor, that's not necessarily in the upper Ventura River basin. That could be new sources of water. And some of the, the total potential estimates I've seen have been the seven to, 7,000, 8,000 acre feet per year potential. This is, this, what needs to happen here is we need to get some exploratory wells or an exploratory well drill to find out if, if these theories will bear fruit. And of course, then we have the, the dreaded defluent recycling, and that's something we really need to start thinking about. It's about the same cost as desalting, and we can develop storage, storage options so that the reclaimed water can be put into storage if it can't be used right away. The Ojai Valley Sanitary District is planning other uses for its discharge as we speak, and those will be made public, I'm sure, in the near future. And again, we need to adjust our thinking about recycling of our, of our wastewater, because that is a potential source of water that literally goes down the drain. So now what? I think we need to continue and expand our aggressive conservation measures. We need to build in adequate capacity to the State Water Project tie-in. And let me stay on my soapbox a little bit about that, and why, why I'm so insistent, and others are so insistent about building in a large capacity. There's a great article written by Ray Stokes, who runs the Central Coast Water Agency. They supply water to San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara Counties, and he wrote an article called "25 Successful Years of State Water." They've been tied into state water for 25 years, and in 2014, 2015, state water being, literally being tied into state water saved them. They had a lousy allocation from the state, and you're going to hear a lot of people say, "Well, state water is unreliable. We have no idea what the allocation is going to be. They can flip-flop this, and we'll end up with no allocation." That's not the whole issue. The Central Coast Water Agency had a very bad allocation for those two years. They went out and found and brokered, I think, for those two years, total around 30,000 acre feet of water that they brokered from rice farmers in the Sacramento area. They went up and said, "You don't put in rice, I'll buy your water." They brought in that water. It wasn't as cheap as the water they, they were normally supplying, but it wasn't, it wasn't out of sight. I think they brought in that water, treated it for $746 an acre foot. So he couldn't have done that if they hadn't been tied into state waters. So you need to have the pipeline connection, and so that's why I'm pushing this so hard that get the pipeline connection, build in the capacity, you go out and hire an attorney, you hire a water broker, you find that supplemental water that's not in the, that's not a part of the state allocation, you bring that water in. If you got the pipe, and if you can afford the water, you can bring it in. So when push comes to shove, if you, if you're going to be facing out-of-water or a little more expensive water, I think it's obvious what you would want to choose, at least for me it is. Okay, so that will get off my soapbox about the state water tie-in. And we're looking forward to, to funding a proof of concept of the HOBOs. I hope that'll happen within a year. And we need to start the planning process, process for stormwater capture. I'm very optimistic that that's going to start here in the city of Ojai, and it would be great to see Ojai leading the charge, the city of Ojai leading the charge in the Ojai Valley for stormwater capture systems. And I think we need to put desalination, desalting, affluent recycling into long-term and near-term planning, and of course, there's always praying for rain.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Angelo?
Just one comment really quickly. I think it's, the more we learn, the more we realize regional cooperation is essential. And for example, the regional, East County, or in the Oxnard Plain, the regional desalting line, we have opportunities like that on the other side of the river, but we need a regional mentality to put those, get those economies of scale in place, to have those options. And I think it's also extremely important to people to realize that over the last 25 years, Mr. Stokes stated, "They got more water from non-state sources than from state sources because they had the plumbing." Santa Barbara would be dead if they hadn't had the pipe. We need the pipe.
Well, I think, just one other, if I could comment on that, Cuyegus has taken it upon themselves to lead the charge, I think, in this, in this desalting program on the Oxnard Plain. And I think we need, we need to find, if we can't get somebody to do overall regional, force regional cooperation, we need to find a hero. We need to find somebody that's going to step up to the plate and lead the charge to-
Or find a way to work together.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
I just had a couple comments. You know, I'd like to, I'd like some takeaways tonight, and if anyone talks to, anyone outside of the city, you need to use the term 30-30-30 when it comes to state water. There's an existing 30-inch line on the west end. There's two existing 30-inch lines on the east end, and we need 30 in between. Just, it's real simple, 30-30-30. Don't let anyone say 30-24, 30-18. Don't let anyone say 30, 24, 30, 18. It's 30, 30, 30. That's the most important thing we take away from this. The other thing is that I wanted to touch on, and Angelo, again, thank you so much for all the time and all the effort that you put into this, and all the information that you gather, and then being able to present it so precisely. I'd, I'd like to, Steve, if we can, just put this on our website from here on in, and then as we update this on a monthly basis, we just update what we need to. And that starts us, that starts allowing the community to really recognize that, yes, the city council is aware of the issue, and two, we're doing the best that we can to flex our muscle and making some changes and, and creating some cooperation with other entities. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was exactly what you brought up in the fact that the city of Ventura is already thinking and have put into their CIP budget bringing water from the east county to west Ventura. That started way before the state water tie-in project even came up, much less has been brought to the, to the front burner by everyone committed to, to the 30, 30, 30 concept into the state water tie-in. So, they, they already recognized there was a problem, and that was two years ago. What I'm recognizing is, most of these entities, cities, water purveyors, are out for themselves, and that the only one that's going to speak for this community is us and this council. And we need to recognize that we have some weight that we can throw around, some of us, more than others. But the reality is, if we don't speak up, and if we don't go to city meetings, if we don't go to Casitas Municipal Water District meetings, if we don't attach ourselves to this water issue county-wide, we're not going to be taken care of. We need to be the squeakiest wheel out there. And lastly, state water infrastructure allows us to look for water outside of the state water system. So, we are not married to state water pricing, because you will hear that as the argument not to tie in. It's too expensive. There are other water sources available, Santa Barbara knows it, we know it, and we're going to be looking into it. So, let's keep the pressure up, and let's, Angelo, again, I can't say thank you enough for, for your effort and, and your time in this.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lara?
Angelo. Angelo, I also want to thank you, obviously, for putting this together, but I also want to thank my colleagues, Mayor Pro Tim Wyrick and Randy, and Councilmember Haney, because they have been championship, championed this side of researching and trying to bring everybody together to work on this issue, which is extremely important, serious to address. But I also, I had a question in, in terms of the public, because it's all about educating the public on what the city is doing for developing aggressive conservation measures. Who would be the person to ask these questions to? Because you have a lot of data on these slideshows, on these slides, who would be the appropriate person? Would it be one of the council members, or would it be yourself, or?
Well, I think you have an organization here, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I think they're doing a lot in the way of trying to get the word out on how people can do, can do their, do their best for conservation. I think if they had a lot of support from the council to help them get the word out, however that can happen, I think that's an important part of, of this equation. The stormwater capture portion of the conservation, I think, is going to need, need a broader, a broader approach, because I think it's, it's, it's going to affect how we treat runoff water from the city, for instance.
So, I guess getting the, the word out would be utilizing possibility of the Green Coalition, which we have already funded in, to a certain degree, on, on some of the programs, and that is one of the programs, is education on water measure. I guess working with them more closely and defining how to answer some of these questions would be great.
And how you, how you treat them on the website, and, and there, there can be bulletins posted, there can be recommendations posted, and there just has to be a lot more information out there and encouraging the public, because when it rains, we need to capture every single drop that hits the ground. The way, the way we're now, are now, we can't afford to let a drop escape us down to the ocean, if it's at all possible. So, I think we need to change our whole attitude, our whole mentality about not only conservation, but how we capture that blessed rainfall when it does, does hit the ground.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, I have one more comment on that. You know, we have been on this for, Angelo, you've been on it for over a year, and I know that William and I have been on this for at least six months. And, and I can just, I can let the community know, there's a lot of moving parts, and, and there isn't a week that doesn't go by that we don't learn something new. I'd like to present it tonight and move it forward for the new council, but we may, we may need to think about hiring an individual, someone like Angelo here, who has the time, who can dedicate themselves to all of the information gathering that's, that's out there, attend even more meetings than what we're attending already, and be an advocate for this community through the council. So, it's something we need to think about, it's something that I've been, that I have personally been thinking about for months because of so much information that's out there, and so much technology that you need to be able to grasp in a short amount of time, and distill it, and, and, and bring it to the community, and also go and argue on our behalf. So, I think we need to think about that. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. We don't have a lot of time for questions from the audience, but does anybody in the public have a, any question? Yeah, come on up forward. Hi, Christine.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Blatts and Councilperson. My question is, is there an environmental impact study that goes along with, for example, the kind of drilling that would take water out of the rock in the mountains, the sedimentary rock? What happens to those mountains? And also, I know that, I saw you, Mr. Wyrick, at one of the films that the Film Festival put on about the water issue, and desalination does grave harm to the environment, so I want to know if that's part of the study? Maybe somebody could answer that. Thank you.
It certainly is, and that certainly, I would, I would, if, I, for example, Supervisor Bennett is pushing desolidization, and this is an issue that comes up constantly. This December 1st meeting is going to be interesting to see how those issues are addressed. And certainly, Keyegus talks at, at long length about the importance of the environmental issues and environmental mitigation. So, as far as the horizontal bore that was presented by the Casitas Municipal Water District, that's there, in fact, I would say that one of the people that brought up this option is here tonight, and I would suggest that, Jordan, would you want to address that maybe later? Or not? Or now? On the environmental issue of horizontal bores?
Are you calling me the father of a hobo?
This man has a lot more expertise than I do to answer your question.
I can speak to that to some degree when it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, Christine, excellent questions that need to be answered.
Anybody else with a quick question? Yeah.
Risa Horowitz, and my question is, the gentleman was speaking about two alternatives. He was talking about desal and the other was?
Desalting.
Desalting. Can a desalting facility later be converted to desal?
One of the reasons is that the brine discharge from desalting is of entirely different nature than a true, full-blown desalinization. So, the environmental mitigations are of a completely different nature, that's my understanding. I can be corrected if I'm wrong.
Mayor, I just, I know I said I had a last comment, but I have one more comment, too. I just received an email tonight, and I just wanted to, to share with you that Mr. Bennett, the District 1 Supervisor for the county, had, had been for a long time not quite sure if he was behind the state water tie-in. He's, he actually is a, is a long-term thinker of desalinization, and the word came out today that he actually supports the state water tie-in now. And let me tell you, let me read you real quick what he supports in it. If I don't get them mixed up, you know what? I'll pass, because I'm not going to take any more time from you, but I will say that Mr. Bennett is now 100% behind the state water tie-in. And, and as far as Casitas Municipal Water District is, I think we need to make it clear to them that it can't be either-or, it can't be hobos versus tie-in. We need to look at this as a complete, whole package, and they should be looking at hobos as well as their commitment to the state water tie-in.
All right, thank you. Well, we have another presentation now. We have Jordan Kerr from the Basin, OBGMA, who's with us. So, Jordan, if you'd come forward, he's going to give us a report on the health of our, yes?
It's very warm back here.
Okay. Can somebody get the thermostat, please? I was thinking it's pretty warm up here, too, so thank you.
We're talking about water, every seat's a hot seat, that's for sure.
That's it.
Whether you're on the outside of the horseshoe or this side.
So, welcome, Jordan. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much, Mayor Blatts. I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and the, and the citizens. Thank you. All right.
We want here, everywhere.
And thank you, Angelo, for, you know, your great anecdotes and your great introduction. You've really paraphrased in some ways very well. A lot of the work that, that I've had the pleasure of doing as a student of the watershed and of the Ojai Basin over just the past two decades or so. It's, it's been a, it's been a long, relatively long and interesting journey, but really just a drop in the bucket of time and a drop in the bucket of the hydrohistory of this, of this watershed. Because we all remember the drought of 94 to '05, 1894 to 1905, and 1914 to 1925, and so on and so forth. The idea being that we're not the first people to face this problem, and we're not the first ones to postulate solutions and take a look at the rocks and the watersheds and help to conceptualize some potential solutions. One of my favorites that I came across last week when doing some research was a paper published in 1925 by J.B. Lippincott, an engineer out of Los Angeles, who, among other things, postulated five different dams in the, in the watershed, including one on the Sespe River, Sespe Creek, called the Cold Springs Dam, and then tunneling through the mountains, going along, contoured a ditch, through another tunnel to bring water into the Ojai Valley. They also had a, a postulation of a little dam called Matilahaw. Of course, that ended up being constructed, and now has a future all its own. There was another dam called Santa Ana that was a smaller version of what we now know as Lake Casitas, even smaller in 1925 as postulated than Lake Casitas is today, volumetrically speaking. They also had a, a postulation of a dam on San Antonio Creek near Lion Canyon, where it would have dammed up the creek at that point and let the water fill all the way back to town, so that you would have a lake at the end of this town, of this valley. Various concepts have come, come and go, and I've had the pleasure of, of working on some in association with Casitas and Water Resources Engineering Associates on the reconnaissance level study that Angelo referred to. And I would encourage you to visit the Casitas website and download a copy of that report in draft form. It's a preliminary reconnaissance level evaluation of the dozen or so two-tiered evaluations of potential water sources that would add to the security of Lake Casitas. Driving around today, I came across this sign in Miners Oaks, maybe you've seen it. It says, "Lake Casitas, our backup water supply critically low." Anybody else see that sign recently? It struck me as odd, and I almost took a photograph of it, because in the background of that sign is the outcrop of the Matilahaw Formation that we're talking about, and is the, the target resource for the horizontal bores. So, I encourage you to get into the level of detail that you wish and explore that report. It is preliminary, it is reconnaissance level, and we're hopeful to add to the more intensive study that would, that would support either further design or a pilot project, and importantly, compliance with, with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, which would include a potential EIR as a question. So, I hope that answers that question to some degree.
Jordan, if you could, for the benefit of the audience and the people that are watching this at home, I have the pleasure of working with you every month, being on the board of the OBGMA. Could you give a little bit background in terms of your education and training and your background in, in terms of hydrology?
Certainly. It was the drought of 1977, and, well, the one that more or less ended in 1977, and water was being rationed where I lived. And the, the teacher at the school where I was would only let us put about a quarter of an inch of water in the bottom of a bucket. And there was some smart kid in the class who said, "Hey, Jordan, if you put sand in your bucket, your water level will come up." So, I tried it, and what, what happened to my water? It went away, or so it looked to go away. But what happened was the water that I had had been displaced to some degree by the sand, but then had been stored within the pore spaces between the sand. So, there was four-year-old Jordan with a firsthand example of fluid flow through porous media, and that really spurred a lifelong interest in, in these very resources. And of course, then I went on to, to pursue a bachelor of science degree in geological sciences from UC Santa Barbara, and a, a master's degree from California State University Northridge, and the subject of my thesis was the hydrogeology of the Ojai Basin. Where we, we did a series of six aquifer tests, pumping on various wells in the basin, and observing the, the drawdown in, in, in other wells that were not pumping, and correlated cross-sections, much like the one that, that Angelo showed earlier today. That's from that 2005 publication that was my master's thesis. And as I mentioned, I've been doing this for a couple decades now, since 94, since graduation. With my bachelor's, I began consulting work and am a professional geologist, licensed to practice geology in the state of California, as well as a certified hydrogeologist. And about, a little over six years ago, in 2010, we founded Care Groundwater, and the OBGMA is, is one of our key sustaining clients, and we have the ongoing pleasure of working with the board, studying, and really, as I like to call myself, a student of, of this watershed and of this basin.
Thank you.
So, without further ado, we have a presentation tonight entitled "The Ojai Basin Boundary Modifications and the Quest for an Alternative Plan." This is the exact same presentation that is on the OBGMA website. It is dated the 27th of October, 2016, and like many things in water, it's always in a dynamic state. It's never stable, it's never isolated. It's either coming up, or it's coming down. So, as we sit here almost a month later, things have changed from this presentation that you'll see today. We'll have an updated presentation similar to this on the OBGMA website, so again, I'll refer you to that, to take a look at that and, and download. What we try to keep as updated monthly as possible. The GMA is, is dark in November because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So, I'll speak to this, using this as an outline, but go off what you'll see on some of these slides and, and provide some new data that we just have collected and downloaded today. Just as a show of hands, I wonder how many folks in the audience and on the board might consider that Lake Casitas, has it gone up or down since August, in storage or in water level?
Lake Casitas.
Lake Casitas, okay, down or up? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Down.
Down. All right. Do you see where I'm going with this? Ojai Valley groundwater basin, up or down since August?
Up.
Been to your meetings.
Up.
There you go. So, you've been to the meetings, you, you know the answer is up. And today, as I stand before you right now, we know that the water level in the basin has come up 5.3 feet in the key well in the center of the Ojai Basin since the August 2016 annual low. We know that because we have a network of monitoring wells throughout the basin that really monitor the health of the basin, let us know on a three-hour interval what the water levels are in the basin. And they are strategically located in wells that are, belong to cooperating entities, and they have the, the benefit of being located in deep portions of the basin and shallow portions of the basin, and in the case of the San Antonio Creek Spreading Grounds Project, the depth-discrete monitoring well there actually has five separate casings that penetrate five separate zones, including the Sespe Formation, a bedrock aquifer in that, in the lowest of that well. So, it's very interesting, but we have, we have our fingers on the pulse of this basin like never before. And if you can imagine the data set, Angelo alluded to this. And if you can imagine the data set, Angelo alluded to this, of every three hours a data point for the past six years, that's a very significant and very valuable resource. Back to the matter at hand. The alternative plan is something that is required because of the enactment of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It's really about three separate bills that were signed into law by the governor in 2014. And one of the first things that an agency would do is take a look at the basins and say, "Which ones are high priority, low priority? Which ones are now not really used? We're not going to focus on those too much." Ojai received a medium priority. And one of the first things to do was to establish are there basin boundary changes from what's been understood to be the geographic outlay of the basin. I also want to talk a bit about sustainability. It's a buzzword we see quite a bit, but I like to remember that sustainability is forever. We're talking about droughts that are chronic, we're talking about a need for a water resource that's really infinite, and really, the more we have in our portfolio to meet those needs with that resource, that can lead us towards sustainability. And why the alternative plan is ideal for the Ojai Valley. SIGMA, as the acronym says, defines sustainability as sustainable groundwater management, and it's the management of and use of groundwater in a manner that can be maintained during the planning and implementation horizon, which in this case is about a 20-year period, without causing undesirable results. So, what's the key phrase there? Undesirable results. Undesirable results. Chronic and often irreversible lowering of groundwater levels indicating a significant and unreasonable depletion of supply. Second bullet, defining undesirable results. Significant and unreasonable reduction of groundwater and storage, and again, irreversible. Third bullet, significant and unreasonable seawater intrusion. Now, obviously, here in Ojai, we're not adjacent to the coast, although we feel close to it frequently. We're separated from the ocean by several faults and several bedrock highs, as well as elevation. So, seawater intrusion is not really a concern here. Significant and unreasonable degraded water quality. And that's something that when droughts occur, we do notice a little bit of a change in water quality. And the Desalter Program that Angelo alluded to and is in the Casitas study attempts to preemptively approach increasing the usability of the deepest aquifers here in Ojai that would be subject to a degradation of water quality. Significant and unreasonable land subsidence is another one. We'll talk about that. And then the final bullet point under definition of undesirable results. Surface water depletions that have significant and unreasonable adverse impacts on the beneficial uses of the surface water. Also, as has been alluded to, much of the groundwater in Ojai finds its way out via wells or via discharge to the San Antonio Creek. We've calculated the two-acre-foot-per-day number when the creek is dry at the surface, still discharging down that valley. A brief snapshot of what's going on in the watershed, all of our water is local. And in fact, some of the benefits of having a local water resource and no state water tie-in has been the funding of many of the projects from the state level through Prop 50, Prop 84, and et cetera. The DWR and the funding agencies have recognized the dependence on this watershed on itself, not on imported water. And as state water projects, water or enterties come into play and are added to the portfolio, they've been that way in paper for a long time. It's that physical infrastructure that's been lacking and the actual deliveries of that water. More to come on that. The DWR, Department of Water Resources, has Bulletin 118, California's Groundwater. If you've checked it out, it's a pretty user-friendly report. But what they did was they had a mapping of each of the state's groundwater basins based largely on a 1969 1 to 250,000-scale geologic map. So, anything that was alluvium was considered a groundwater basin. That ended up with the Ojai Valley having a 10.1 square mile surface area of alluvium, but much of it was far off of the actual basin that was actually holding the water and actually yielding water to the wells. So, we had the opportunity to modify the basin boundaries to be reflective of the actual geology. And what that did was that decreased the surface area of the basin to about 8.7 square miles, but didn't reduce the storage capacity of the basin or its capacity. The DWR approved this recommendation and has adopted the outline in red for the basin boundary of the Ojai Valley basin. On a more detailed geologic map, this is from a much more recent than the 1969 geologic map, outlined in the red dash is the original 118 basin boundary and the revised boundaries there in blue, following much more realistically the contact of the alluvium with the bedrock and importantly, the Santa, the Royal Parita Santa Ana Fault on the south side of the basin, and then on the west side of the basin, a bedrock high just west of the Ojai Valley School Campus. Interestingly, when you're riding your bike or walking, you notice it more than when you're driving, but that very gentle ridge that you go up over as you exit the city to the, and the basin to the west, that corresponds to an underlying bedrock high. And that was used to demonstrate that proposed revised boundary. Also, on that south side, in what we call the Skunk Ranch Loeb, were several oil wells, oil exploration wells, some which had production, none of which had much, if any, fresh water in them. And in fact, when we looked at the logs, we saw that the alluvium was so thin there that it wouldn't make sense to yield water to wells. In fact, it would be less than 25 feet thick or so in most cases. So, if you were to put a water well there and construct it to county or state standards, you would effectively seal off any alluvium that's there. So, hence, and the DWR agreed, moving that basin boundary to the north as shown in this little cross-section. This is a simplified cross-section stretched out vertically by about 10 times in the main graphic, and on the very bottom, it's with zero exaggeration, showing the undifferentiated bedrock in red and the undifferentiated alluvium, which comprises the groundwater basin in the stippled tan pattern. So, hydrologically, ups and downs, droughts and deluges, absolutely common. This graph, although we mentioned the drought of 94 to '04 earlier, this graph only goes back to 1930. And during that time, we see several periods where we have five years or more of deficient rainfall, less than the 21 and a quarter inches that falls on the valley floor. Of course, the precipitation is higher in the upper ends of the watershed. That's the bar chart on the top of this graph. The lower chart is an accumulative departure curve, which reads somewhat like a stock chart for drought. When the drought is on, that graph is declining to the right. When the periods of deluge come along, when the aquifers are recharged and the basin is recharged, you have a significant uptick in the accumulative departure curve. And this is an N-member-based graph that's a usable tool for us to sort of hindcast when we were in drought, when we were in periods of excess or adequate rainfall. Groundwater extraction here. Since 1985, the OB GMA has been taking good notes on what has been extracted from this basin. The GMA was established in 1991, and you'll notice where that red little explosion is on the 1991 bar. That was near the peak extraction period of water from this basin. And since that time, we see a significant decline, almost by half as of the 2016 year, in acre-foot extraction from the basin. This is the sum of all the wells that are extracting water from the basin, private, public, domestic, municipal, industrial wells. Everything that's pulling water out of the basin is accounted for here. The GMA has enacted a metering ordinance to where every well needs to be metered, and this is something that SIGMA now requires for basins that are in much greater peril than Ojai. Here's a bit of a blow-up of the water level hydrograph that Angelo showed. What's shown here is the depth to water, zero at the top of the graph, 350 feet below ground surface at the bottom. And the x-axis on this is in years from 1940 to about 2023, so it goes off the scale here in a little bit. But the key points to point out here is that in 1951, on September 11th, they measured a depth to water of 312 feet in this Key Well. And what's interesting to me about that, now that we have the three-hour intervals, the county or whoever was operating this and taking those measurements probably came out at most once a month, and they probably missed the absolute low period. But that's the best data we have, 312-foot depth to water in this particular well. What you'll notice when the rains came in 1952, even though it's likely a period of drought as well, that water level shot up to shallower than 100 feet in less than two years with that precipitation. Because this tributary area is about 36 square miles and the alluvial area of the basin is less than 10, we've got a pretty big funnel and a pretty small sandbox into which to store a significant amount of water. So, that's why we have these very sharp cycles, very sawtooth hydrographs that look like this. 1965, it was 280 feet. April 1978, shortly after my indoctrination into porous, into fluid flow through porous media as a preschooler, the water level in this well was only 38.2 feet, and so on and so forth. But at this point, the recent lows that we've had, and granted, we're probably more accurate now than we were, as I described earlier, in previous years, which is to say that the lows that are shown on this graph prior to 2004 are probably not as accurate as what we have today, and they may have been lower. In March 2016, the water level was 247 feet. The low this year was 265 feet in August. And that's much earlier than we've seen in recent years, owing to conservation and appropriate well rehabilitation efforts, some of the stumping and not pumping, it sounds like a bumper sticker, but it's a good philosophy if you're a farmer, stump it, don't pump it. That kind of practice during times of drought can get a basin like Ojai through the times of drought, because we know the deluge is coming. Don't know when, but historically, it gets here. Here's a snapshot of the data logger data, three-hour intervals of that Key Well since May 2014. You see the declines. We have a November 2014 low and then a rise in groundwater levels up to March 2015, a long decline all the way to December in 2015. And then in 2016, March, once again, March tends to be a pretty good high year, but we've seen some Aprils and Junes historically. And then the groundwater recession of 2016, bottoming in August. Since that time, when the water level was 264.7 feet, it's come up 5.3 feet, as I mentioned, based on the measurements that we took today and that are continuing to be logged in all of the wells that are around the basin. As I mentioned, this is a basin that is in a perpetual dynamic state, either in a state of recharge when water levels are coming up, or in a state of recession as water levels are going down. So, no snapshot is going to be accurate, and anything we tell you is going to be outdated quickly. But on a monthly basis, what we suggested as of October 27th, it was that the basin was 45% full with an estimated 37,400 acre-feet in storage. And it's important to know which direction things are trending. Since that time, the trend has been upward, and we see another, some 200 acre-feet that has been added to the basin, largely by inflow from bedrock in the headwaters. You don't see it as surface water, but it makes it to the basin. That increase in storage is evident in the rise of the 5.3 feet, and we can update this, and you'll see it updated if you check the website, in a few days of November 15th, 2016, 45 and change percent full with an estimated 37,630 acre-feet. How do we know that number? Well, we know the lateral extent of these aquifers, and we know the vertical thickness of them. We also know their porosity, or what we call in hydrogeologic world, specific yield. And that is the amount of water that would drain out of a unit of aquifer thickness in percentage under gravity. Basically, it's how much water you can get out of that sponge if you're pumping on a well. And it's somewhere between 3 and 5% in the Ojai Valley. So, we know that when you have a certain footage of decline in the water table portion of the aquifer, which is different from the confined portion of the aquifer, we have a certain quantity of water per unit thickness that comes into or out of the basin with that change in water level. Subsidance is a big problem that is an undesirable result. We don't see a lot of that here. In fact, I don't know of any examples of subsidence realistically in a significant or unreasonable way that we would see here in Ojai, unlike places like Pima County, Arizona. And others that have, well, cars, Studebaker's in this case, falling into cracks in the earth. I don't know of any cracks around Ojai that would swallow a car. If you drive fast enough on Grand Avenue and go through Thatcher Creek, you'd probably think you were going into a crack, but it's been a while since I've ridden a motorcycle down that way. What is subsidence? Subsidance is when the hydrologic pressures that provide some support to a sand or gravel or clay or silt aquifer unit are removed. That pressure is lowered and the actual structure can actually compress. No longer is it being lifted up by water. This happens in places where you have a laterally extensive aquifer like the Central Valley. The Oxnard Plain has this to some degree, but in smaller alluvial basins like Ojai, especially those that are more supported by clasts, the gravels and boulders and cobbles that make up the valley fill, you don't have the fine-grained silts and clays that are saturated that will yield water and have their pressure reduced. In a technical way, it looks like this. Over time, as pressure changes, under native conditions, the graph on the left, number one, coarse-grain material stays a certain thickness, fine-grain material has a certain thickness under pressure. On the right, you have the previous land surface. What happened to the coarse-grain material? It did not compact, but the fine-grain material did. So, where we lack the fine-grain material and we're not supported by boulders and cobbles and gravels, oh my, like we are in Ojai, we don't have that kind of compression. So, we don't see the kind of subsidence that's very problematic, significant, and unreasonable, and an undesirable result that drives SIGMA and drives the planning process. We also have some satellite data. And I love this graph because every time I look at it, whether I'm in my office or in a boardroom or in a meeting, I seem to learn something new from it. The scale here, this is a hillside shading graph of relative ground motion in millimeters per year from about 2000 to 2011. And what this tells us graphically is where the velocity is changing in millimeters per year, and it's a cooler color, things are going down. Again, millimeters per year. And where they're a warm color, it's coming up. So, when I look at this, one thing that your eye is drawn to is that on the valley floors, you see all of the dots, and you see the cooler colors on the east end and the warmer colors on the west end, literally going right through about where we're standing. Anybody else ever hear of Ojai being called the vortex? This kind of shows it. This isn't a subsidence graph. This is a tectonic feature. Think of the table, and over there's the west, and over there's the east, and if I tilt, if I have uplift on the Ventura Riverside of this table or this system, it's rising. And on the east, literally of where we're standing, it's going down. What is that? Is that subsidence due to groundwater withdrawal? Well, if that were the case, we'd see no changes in the bedrock material. Well, if that were the case, we'd see no changes in the, in the bedrock material, but we do here, and all the changes on the valley floor. So what I see when I look at this is that this is an example of a, in millimeters per year over a 10-year period, a tectonic shift wherein things are moving up to the west of us and moving down to the east of us. Not relative to groundwater extraction, but really just tectonic uplift. And that's the fascinating part about living in such a dynamic watershed. Not only is the water on the move, it's very flashy, but the tectonics are there as well. It's fascinating. Anybody else find that fascinating? Okay.
I mean, instead of leaning to the left or leaning to the right?
And then you'll go back again someday. Right. It's the way the pendulum swings, doesn't it? But in the Central Valley, it's another story. We're talking about millimeters per year over a 10-year period there. Here we have 100 millimeters per year of extension subsidence. That's real subsidence with just 50 feet of groundwater lowering over that same time period. 50 feet of groundwater lowering in Ojai is called spring and fall in a wet year. There it's a bigger problem. And that's why you have the subsidence there in addition to the geologic factors. So I say, is subsidence happening in Ojai? I don't think so. Because you have a gravel matrix-supported aquifer system, it's not fine-grained aquifer material. It's limited in lateral extent compared to the large basins. The recharge to the aquifers occurs over the long-term period of record. Moreover, we had the 1951 low. As long as we stay above that threshold, then whatever compaction did occur or conceptually could occur would not be exacerbated, it would not be exceeded. And we wouldn't decrease the pressure that was supporting the aquifer below on an inelastic point that occurred mid-century, but has yet to be reached. We have no observed sub-surface evidence and no observed subsurface evidence, the, the crushed can well casing issue. If a, if a, if a water well was 1,000 feet deep and the aquifer was 1,000 feet deep when it was drilled, but then the subsidence occurred and it went down to 980 feet, you would see a crushed can well case. We don't see a lot of that in Ojai. And these days, we oftentimes design water wells with a piston effect that can actually accommodate some of that, some of that, of that compression. There are 1,000-foot-deep water wells in the Central Valley that have two or three of those sections that can accommodate 40 feet of actual real compression over the life of that well. Here in Ojai, we have 100-year-old wells that look like they were put in yesterday. So we don't see that kind of thing here. That's where the, the water well that wasn't ground surface is actually higher than the ground surface today. And we don't see the cracks. Which is why the Ojai Basin is a perfect candidate for the alternative plan. We have long-term records that demonstrate effective sustainability. And even though it feels really dry at times and water levels are really low, it's a climatic-driven condition. It's periods of drought and periods of deluge that are reflected in our, in our water levels and in our groundwater storage. This basin returns to very full very quickly with recharge. Think about 2011, wet or dry year? Average? Wet, dry? Anybody? Anybody? Just a little above average. We had Artesian wells flowing at Soul Park in 2011. So quickly. Which brings us to why the ideal candidate for an alternative groundwater sustainability plan is, is ideal for Ojai. This needs to be submitted by January 1st, 2017. We've, have a draft for the board internally review and we'll have a, a period of public comment, we expect, in, in early December. And this will be updated every five years. So this is a living document. It will serve as, based on data that we collect, let's change it. When we learn something new, let's change it. When we get a new water source to the portfolio, let's say the hobos are successful and we pick up eight, 16, 24,000 acre feet of water to lay casitas out of that and we can continue the conjunctive use of surface water with groundwater in Ojai, this basin will sustain. It's a problem that's plagued everyone who's attempted to manage the basin from the times when it was proposed to become the Ojai Irrigation District in 1925 to today. And I guarantee you, death, taxes and drought are the sure things that we're going to be dealing with for many, many years to come. So the alternative plan is ideal for basins with existing management models, ideal for basins with detailed measurement histories, ideal for basins with no overdraft that is not related to drought, ideal for basins where conjunctive use and self-regulatory, regulating conditions have been ongoing for years. It's ideal for Ojai to have an alternative plan. It's also a lot less expensive. And when you're a small agency like the OB GMA is, operating on effectively a shoestring budget, it's especially ideal. If we go back to this and, and think about this, this timeframe, there's a 10-year period that needs to be accounted for in the, in the alternative sustainability plan. We've selected 2006 to 2016, mostly because we have the most data during that period. It's also a deficient period with respect to the long-term average and the basins maintained a fair degree of health throughout that time period. And the one thing we haven't touched on was the habitat issue. So let's do that. National Marine Fisheries, Casitas biologists and others have conducted studies along San Antonio Creek over three reaches. And what they did, the first reach is what we call the first, the, the southernmost or lowest reach, going from the confluence with the Ventura River up to the Lion Canyon point. The second reach, in the slightly darker blue there, goes from Lion Canyon up to the Grand Avenue Bridge. And the uppermost reach is in yellow, going from the Grand Avenue Bridge to the point of diversion for the San Antonio Creek spreading grounds. And what they did was they took a look at fish over the course of a 2008 to 2016 year period collectively. And we've digested those data into sort of a presence or absence matrix where if you, if you take the, are there, are there nests or reds? Are there pars? Are there smolts? Or are there adults of steelhead? Rainbow trout spawning steelhead? An endangered species? Ornorycus micus? And what we did was we took a look at this. We said, if this were an unsustainable extraction period, we would expect that during dry times, the fish would not be able to be sustaining, they would not be spawning, they would not be, they would not be able to live in this habitat area. And what was interesting about this, when we digested it all down, in the graph here, 2008 to 2016, in 2008, we saw reds, which are the little nests of eggs, if you will, footprints of the nests of eggs, par, which are the very juveniles and, and smolts, which are a little bit older, and then adults, which can swim in the ocean and then come back to spawn. 2008, within those three reaches, there were no indications of adults, but they did have reds, they did have par and they did have smolt. And then from 2009, all the way to, through 2014, there was the presence of each of those within those reaches as well. It wasn't until 2015 that the only sighting, if you will, was of one par in the lowest reach near the confluence with the Ventura River that showed the presence of any of this species, an endangered species. And we're thinking, if this were unsustainable, we would expect nothing going forward. We would expect that these fish would be gone and never come back. But guess what happened in 2016? We saw the adults, we saw the smolts, we saw the par, and there were probably some reds that they just didn't see in these surveys, which is very encouraging, that despite the decline in water levels shown in this graph in the key well as the squiggly line and the deficient precipitation, 2008 to 2016, and the, on the blue bars, and the commensurate and correlative decline in groundwater extraction, especially in 2014, 15 and 16, allowed for, if we add the fish metric to that, shown in purple, a decline in fish presence or absence and then a rise back in 2016. We anticipate that the rains we're all praying for without ceasing come back. We'll see this feature again on San Antonio Creek. Wells flow Artesian again and of course, the habitat returned. That is the very nature of sustainability and that is the very nature of the OB GMA's alternative sustainability plan. Monitoring what the presence of water in the system is and how it is naturally recharged and discharged and used in a way that reflects wise groundwater stewardship. I thank you very much and there may be a question or two.
Thank you, Jordan. Anybody on the council have a question?
Oh, I have a couple.
Let's keep an eye on the time, guys.
Right. Jordan, I just had one question, the, obviously I have a lot of questions, but I'll just ask one.
Sure.
The relationship between the OB GMA and the water levels that are there and the Casitas Municipal Water District water levels. We're showing a, a need, let's say in four years, of 7,000 acre feet of water a year. Do you feel that the OB GMA could supply that 7,000 acre feet a year and still meet your sustainability requirements?
The, the OB GMA is not a purveyor. Okay, that's, that should be, that should be clear. The OB GMA is a groundwater management agency that is paying attention to the water levels in the basin, which are extracted by others. But if I can paraphrase what I think your question is about is really how much water do we got in the basin that can sustain, assuming we have no significant rainfall? And what we've demonstrated, in fact, this year with between 200 and 800 acre feet entering the basin with all of an inch and a half of rainfall this past fall, is that there's about 2,000 acre feet that enter this basin either by irrigation return flow or by subsurface flow from the, from the headwaters without precipitation. So we have a certain, a certain quantity of water that's going to come into the basin regardless of rainfall. When we get over 12 inches of rain, which is bound to happen, we're going to see a significant rise in those water levels and in the basin storage, in fact, to Artesian flow. So we can't guarantee that when it will happen. We don't know when it will happen. We may get a really wet winter this year, we may not. But if we only have 38,000 acre feet or so of water left in the basin and we're extracting 3,000 acre feet a year, the math's pretty easy. We've got only a few years, less than a decade, with no recharge. But if we add that it's a, that we get 2,000 acre feet in and we have, we start with that 37,000 acre foot number, then we could have upwards of three decades of water within this basin at current rates. But much of that is based on the practice of conjunctive use with Casitas, with surface water that comes in to the purveyors and to the pumpers to offset their demand on the basin.
Right. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, let's say the conditions remain the same and we're getting eight to nine inches of water a year, which is not going to increase the yield in lake, in the lake Casitas.
No.
Okay? In fact, you're just going to see a decline. You're going to see a decline because of evaporation just in itself. You're going to receive some form of recharge, which I'm 100% in agreement and your explanation is, is clear on that. What I'm trying to say is somewhere in between, the community, I think, has a sense that we have an aquifer underneath us and we have the ability to tap into it through our purveyor, whether it's Golden State, whether it might be Casitas, whether it might be an independent company, who knows? Okay? So I, what I'm trying to say is, how, how do the two agencies interact so that the community might feel better about its ability to sustain itself in, in this moment and if this drought continues? Do you have a, do you have a sense that we'll be relying more on the aquifer and less on lake? Because I know both of them are praying for rain.
Yeah.
But your recharge is greater than the lake's is. So that's all I'm trying to ask is, how can we convey that to the community that we have a water source, that it is available in dire needs, we might be able to tap into it at a greater extent than we are today? And is there any form of communication between the groundwater agency and the surface water agencies?
Sure. Well, I think one thing that should be clear is that the OB GMA is a, is, it's a board. It's governed by a five-member board. The city has a seat, Casitas has a seat, Golden State Water Company has a seat, the mutual water purveyors, mutual water companies in the basin have a seat. And then the, and then the Ojai Valley or Ojai Water Conservation District has a seat. There are five agencies that have a seat on that board. Casitas is a big one. And, and I think that personally, I'm grateful to that interaction that there is a Casitas member on the board of the OB GMA. I've gotten to know Mr. Baggerley and, and others that preceded him that have allowed my personal involvement in projects like the Hobo Idea. So there's a lot of communication that goes on within that, within that agency because there is a seat on the board of the OB GMA for the surface water purveyor. And there's a lot of communication and I, and I would in fact say that there's as much communication, if not more, from the Casitas side to the OB GMA than some of the other agencies. City is not a water purveyor. The, the Water Conservation District doesn't necessarily chime in very much with respect to the goings-on of the Ojai Water Conservation District. The mutuals have some things to add from time to time. But I think probably the most vocal board member is that of Casitas. And they certainly, as a purveyor and the surface water wholesaler in the area, really carry a, they kind of Bigfoot it around.
Maybe there's a better way of phrasing it. Can Golden State Water right now take as much water out of this aquifer as they want? Or is there any limitation on them? And maybe you're not the right person to ask that to. And I don't want to put you on the spot.
There's no legal allocation of which I am aware, but there are very practical ones.
But there's no legal. So technically, Golden State, if, if needed to, to meet the needs and the demands of the, of the community, they could extract more water.
Well, I think it, it technically is probably not, not the right word. They may have the legal right to do it as an appropriator to the extent that it's reasonable and beneficial, but that's of course, subject to challenge. So the, the, the technical side, it's impractical.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jordan.
Very good question.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to. We took an hour and a half for those two presentations tonight, but I think it's important that we do stay focused on our water situation. And so it was well worth the time spent. But now we're going to have to kind of zip through some of the things. The next portion of our meeting is commission reports. Are there any chairs of any of our commissions out there that have a report for us? Yeah, come on up.
Hey, Reckon Parks.
All right. Park and Recreations Commission.
Thank you and good evening. Chair Dutter couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here and we might also have Commissioner Gilbert as well.
And you are?
Ryan Firestone. Wanted to give you an update. I know we don't come to a lot of the, the council meetings to give updates, so we thought we were due for one, the Sarzadi Park Master Plan. We expect to recommend a master plan to you very soon. At our December meeting, we plan to review what we hope is the final draft of that. There's already, if you've been to Sarzadi Park recently, there's already work going on as far as installing the new covered picnic areas and barbecues and we've been, the commission's been weighing in on, on the placement of those to make sure that that's going to fit in with the, the master plan, which is in draft form at this point. The Bike Park, which the city sponsored an environmental review of, proposed at the Lower Libby location, the Ojai Valley, so that environmental review has happened. There are some pieces of the study that, that weren't part of what was funded and the Ojai Valley Bicycle Coalition is working to get those pieces of the review done so we can complete the study. Hopefully, I would expect in the next few months that all of that would be done. The Skate Park Lights Project, the Ojai Skate Lights Organization has completed fundraising for that, so they now have enough money to fund the project. So I imagine pretty soon, the council is going to be asked to get that started. We've heard a lot of excitement about that, about having more opportunities for kids We've heard a lot of excitement about that, about having more opportunities for kids after it's dark out. The Recreation Department, staff continues to do an excellent job of providing recreational opportunities to kids and adults. They're now providing after-school childcare at Topa Topa and Miners Oaks Elementarys. The senior fitness class has expanded to a second time slot to accommodate everyone who's interested. There's a ceramics class at Nordoff for adults. There have been recently some free basketball clinics put on by volunteers, as well as all the ongoing activities of the Rec Department. Commissioners are also participating in the Complete Streets Project and the Libby Bowl Committee. And we're also working with the Rec Department to consider city uses for Soul Park. The counties has expressed interest in partnering us if we have good ideas for how to expand our recreational services by using that space. So that's it. Is Commissioner Gilbert here?
Yes.
No. Okay. I'll just add, Commissioner Gilbert is our youth commissioner, and she's been working on putting together a youth committee to inform our commission. So we should have more on that in the coming months.
Thank you, Mr. Firestone. Thank you for your service to the community, as well as all the commissioners. Any other, any other commissioners that are here? There we go. Building Appeals Board.
Building Appeals Board, Dale Hanson. We met November 2nd and had an in-depth discussion on fire sprinklers in residences and second units and commercial buildings. And though in-depth as it was, we still didn't get finished. So we're going to be meeting again, I think, this Friday, the 18th, with more information so that we can go forward with it. So at the next agenda meeting, I'll be able to report more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else? No? All right, I'm going to move on to our public comment. This is a portion of our meeting where the public can address the council on any issue that they want to, that's not an agendized item tonight. We can't take any action generally unless it's an emergency situation, but we can refer it to staff to put it on a future agenda. And we are running a little bit late. I only have three cards, so we'll be able to get through these. So if you please watch those lights up there. When it gets to red, that means your three minutes is up. And the first one is Christine Golden. She's still here?
No.
No? Stephen Weed.
I'm going to do something a little different tonight, simply because I don't want to stand on my foot for three minutes.
I want to bring a chair maybe for you.
Well, the press isn't here, so feel welcome to use it. Is there a way we can get the, can you get that microphone over there?
Well, we'll see.
Okay. We just don't want any-
If I have to use my outside voice.
Yeah, we just don't want anybody at home to miss hearing you.
Just take a deep breath. I'm slow, but I'm steady. All right?
Take your time.
Ooh, this is fun.
There you go.
There you go. Don't have to use my outside voice. So I want to start by saying I'm here tonight because I won't be here for a while, and I want to take just a few minutes to reflect on things. First of all, I want to say thank you, Severo, for your service. I want to thank all of the people that are here for your efforts on water. It's an amazing presentation to hear. I want to say two things, and for those of you who don't know, I'm going to be going Friday to relocate in Seattle for an extended period of time, so you won't see my smiling face for a while. But I want to reflect on the six and a half years my family's been in this community, and I want you to see if you can tie two themes to what I present. First of all, it's incumbent on the council to know all of its constituents in the community. And secondly, I'd like to say that it's, I'm sorry, it's been a very long day for me. I would like to say that it's critical that you base decisions for this community on facts. Tonight was an excellent example of that, on the positive side. We moved to Ojai six and a half years ago. One of the major reasons was the schools, and that was one of the first venues that I became involved in in public life. And one of the key things for schools is the importance of having a sustainable base of families here that send their children to public schools. And when I think about the interaction between the council and the school board, to date, it's been involved in simply considering, should we designate the auditorium as a historic property? And that's great for a certain segment of our community. But when you take a look at the potential uses of that facility, that really hampers what the school board can do. I basically went to the school board and said, you guys got to get over here to the council meeting, because we have issues that affect affordability of families in this community. And actually, we've had some school board members here. But I would suggest that the reciprocal is true. If you care about having a school district here, you need to interact with those people. The second reason that we really liked Ojai when we relocated here was that, for the most part, it's a very little of a community. People stop when you want to cross the street, people are friendly, and that means something to our family, because we're nice people, right? Now, I'm not going to digress to what happened in this election locally, but from my perspective, it was very similar to the national election. There are people in this town that will not talk to me, that will turn and walk away because we disagreed. But I don't want to go down that path. I want to reflect back on the first issue that brought me to the city council. We'd been here two and a half years. We'd gone through two landlords that did not give a damn about the condition of their property, they wanted their money. Okay? And they came and said, the city council or the city needs to consider licensing long-term rentals, so that you have the ability to inspect those rentals to make sure that they're habitable. Now, despite all the falsehood about short-term rentals, we have 1,400 long-term rentals, and they're in various states of conditions. And the people that want to be residents here that cannot afford to buy, take what they can get. Now, if you want to address your full constituency, you need to look at the conditions of those long-term rentals. And people are really concerned about this being a nice, friendly, family city, but I kid you not, if you don't have money, you don't have much of a stake in Ojai right now. So you need to take a look at your whole constituency, and you need to base things on facts. During the election cycle, I tried to bring to people's attention the Southern California Association of Government Report. That tells the story right there. You have a lot of retired people here, you have a lot more people with money here, but on the average, you also have a lot of people who make it from day to day. I'm not suggesting you take any particular path as far as economic development, tourism, retirement, whatever, but you've got to look at the facts, or you're not going to make good decisions. So, hey, until we see each other again, I wish you all the best, really, because it's not an easy town to govern. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
All the best to you, Stephen.
And I appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Julie Tumamite?
I'd like to point out a couple things. First off, there needs to be some type of pedestrian study at the corner of Park Road and Ojai Avenue. My sister lives near there. Crossing the street a few times have come in very close danger of getting hit by opposite traffic headed west on Ojai Avenue, regardless of the people on the side of the street headed east had stopped for her, nearly to the point where they almost knocked her purse out of her hand, and the car behind her kept going as well. There needs to be some more patrol there, possibly even a light signal such as what we have in front of the Ojai Library, to let drivers know that that is a pedestrian crossing. In general, she's encountered this, because she can't drive anymore, her eyesight isn't really good to drive. About six times in the community since this last year, she's encountered close calls like that. People are, Main Street has become just obsessed with the speed down our Main Street. So just for her safety and for the safety of the pedestrians and people in wheelchairs using that crosswalk, something needs to be done. I would like to also, in case we do not get to agenda item number four, to open that item and allow us some time and a postponement for our deadline of December 1st. There are additional items we would like to prepare and get to you due to conflicts of our scheduling. We just finished our last public talk, our last ad hoc committee meeting last night, and so to get all the proper documents together, this would be probably thousands of hours in the times that we've been here preparing. We want to give you a full and comprehensive report, including the public comments that we have been receiving from our meetings with the public being in attendance to our ad hoc committee meeting. It's very important that, to us, that you see all the work that we have been doing. Our meetings have been condensed to just only three hours a month, so that has also added to the need also to have this extra time for the, to get you all the comments and everything prepared in a proper manner. So we're working very hard towards this, so just in the event that we get to that agenda item that you will consider tonight as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Severo, for your time here with us.
Thank you. Mr. McCleary, I've had several people contact me on what's happening at the area down around Whispering Oaks, as far as the crosswalk there. And now, this time, it's come up around Park Road. So is this something that you could maybe have Mr. Grant give us a report on? I know we have to deal with Caltrans when we do anything across Ojai Avenue, but I think there's two dangerous situations there, and the one at Whispering Oaks is very dangerous as well.
It could certainly.
Do you want to come out?
I'd like to.
Gosh, it's kind of like you open up a genie bottle, and you appeared.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Yes, I'd be glad to, I think these questions came up the last meeting. I was not here at October 25th, right? And I think there were some questions, maybe some misunderstandings, that I think Peter LaFlette was here making some remarks. And just to clarify, we do have a grant we were able to secure. It was a combination of two different grant resources, and it was a CMAC, which is congestion mitigation air quality. They promote bike and pedestrian safety, as well as the ATP, which is Active Transportation Program. And the two of those grants together were $2.8 million. So that's a comprehensive grant, it's significant, it's a combination of federal and state funding, which complicates it a bit as far as approval goes, but that's the entire Ojai Avenue bike and pedestrian improvements, as well as Maricopa Highway. So it's not concentrated just on Whispering Oaks. And it also includes sidewalk infill. I think Councilman Haney also was asking about the east end. There's some, you know, sidewalk infill needed out there, as well as other small portions in town. So that'll take care of all those things. It'll try to implement bike lanes, the entire path, all of Ojai Avenue and Maricopa. It'll try to improve pedestrian crosswalks at primary locations. We had, I think we had 16 of them total. And that's a combination of curb extensions and flashing beacons and those kind of things. And so we did separately from that ATP grant, I'll call it for call, I call it for briefness, we had a grant out at the Whispering Oaks years ago, and it was, that was under a lengthy approval process with Caltrans. And then they requested that we take a look at the ATP grant, we make sure that they all conform properly together. So that was all agreed on, and that was, just completed all this concept design, and we've just had meetings with Caltrans recently, and that whole concept is complete and going, beginning the environmental review, so it can come to council and finalize the environmental documents, so on. So I guess the, maybe the briefer answer would be, Whispering Oaks' design has just been revised to comply with the ATP grant, as well as assure it matches our Complete Streets Master Plan. And we also, I don't think that came up with it, Nordoff High School, there's been some concern about safety over there for crossings, and we secured a grant last year to putting flashing beacons, and that, and that as well as complete all that design. So it's on the agenda for the December 13th agenda, you'll see to go to council, the Whispering Oaks, as well as the Nordoff High School crossings for approval by council for that design. I think those were the primary questions, is that correct?
Question?
For the public's interest, December 13th, on our agenda for a design approval. If we approve, when can people see relief? Expect relief in terms of physical reality.
Reality's difficult, but I think that-
Not studies, not grants, not crosswalks, not consultants approvals. If we approve a design on the 13th, when can they see some safety improvements physically in reality?
I wish I could promise a date, but Caltrans has the keys, you know?
I know that.
Yeah. And I think the firm we're working with now has a lot of extra experience that will move it through quickly. So I think the Nordoff High School, we'd like to put them out to bid at the same time. But I'll say that we should be able to get approval from Caltrans within three months with the firm we're working with now. So three months is approval to construct. We put it to bid, that means we, roughly six months out, we see work being done.
This has been a constant issue that the public's brought before us, and any of us that go out there, I was, I had lunch at the Thai place the other day, it scared me to death, just watching people trying to cross there. And all I'm saying is, I know you like to bid everything at the same time, there's economies of scale to doing that, but if we're looking at a significant extension of time to do that, maybe we want to break things apart a little bit, just a food for thought.
And just to make sure I've got that, it's Whispering Oaks and the four crossings out by the high school. That's what's going December 13th.
I'm just saying, you made a comment about you like to bid everything at once.
Yeah.
But if that means, you know, another year, maybe we want to break it up a little bit and get something going faster. Just a personal opinion.
The Park Avenue crossing is a separate thing under the ATP grant, as well as all that. That unfortunately is a lot of hoops to jump through to get that one approved.
Councilman Haney?
Greg, I'm noticing around town, all these signs that are up, "Drive like your children live here." Is there, is there any sense that we could create a 25 mile an hour zone within city limits? And if we needed, if we needed to do that on the 150, would we need Caltrans approval? Is that something that we could do ourselves?
Greg, before you respond, on that point, Caltrans controls the speed limits on both Ojai Avenue, Highway 33, and Highway 150, Maricopa Highway. We can ask Caltrans, but we don't have the power to force them to make that decision.
But we have the power for-
We control the speed limits on everything else, all the city-run streets, subject to appropriate analysis being done as to what is a safe speed limit.
And you might know the default speed limit is 25. It's called a prima facie, and that's default. But a lot of streets they've done studies on to provide faster speeds in the past, and those are speed surveys, and they, you do a speed survey, and you take the 85th percentile, and that sets the speed limit for that street. So a lot of those are established within town. But the default, if there's no speed limit shown, 25 is the default.
Yeah, well, I know if you start on the east end, you're at 45 coming down the grade, and then you're at 35, and then all of a sudden, you're stopped. But I just have a sense that the community would, might get behind a 25 mile an hour speed zone, speed limit in city limits. I'd like to see the discussion, I'd like to see more input from everyone, but I've been thinking about it for a while, and I just, I just have a sense that it's the right thing to do. And along with the complete street aspect, and also the fact that we're going to be somewhere down the line and incorporate- be somewhere down the line and incorporating more bike lanes and more bike traffic in the community, it might behoove us to put all of this together at the same time and be thinking about that.
And I want to thank you for the four-way stop at Aliso and Signal. That was excellent job.
Thank you.
It was all overdue.
And, uh, thanks, thanks. And, uh, I think that's a good example. You'd think that's just go put the signs up, hurry up, but it really does take, it took me quite a while to get the backup we needed to do that. It, we, as a small city, we don't meet those standards. I mean, the, uh, the state standards that we're supposed to follow require five accidents in a year, but we were able to find a way to, to justify that properly. So five accidents in a year at a big city, that's not a problem, but for a small town that is, yeah.
Well, anyway, that's greatly appreciated. Thank you. I don't have any other speakers cards. Does anyone else want to address us on a non-agendized item? Suzha, come forward.
I would just suggest if it's really true that people are about to be killed as they cross the street, can't we put those orange cones down like we do, um, on Farmer's Market Day? Or those, there's like something that we could just do to slow the cars down.
I think we can do it anywhere in the city, but not on Ojai Avenue.
So who's going to report us to Caltrans?
Oh, I certainly can do it until they tell us not to.
Yeah, we can explain to them that we'd rather do that than have our citizens killed. And people have died in that area. There's been at least two people, maybe three that I can think of. Thank you.
Mr. McClary, maybe you can check on that and see whether we can, you know, sometimes it's better not to ask for permission. No one else wishing to speak to us on the non-agendized item? Then we'll move on to, uh, the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Posen Wierich?
Yes.
It's Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes. All right, moving on to the first of our discussion items. Item number two is an urgency ordinance amending the second residential dwelling ordinance to conform to the new state statutory mandates for second unit ordinance to be valid. Mr. McClary?
All right, I finally get to speak and then I can turn it over to the city attorney to give the report. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. McClary. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you is the continuation of our second unit regulatory efforts. Uh, this is the first of two pieces. Piece one is the urgency ordinance on your dais tonight that is designed to amend the city's current conforming second unit ordinance to meet the bare minimum requirements that are inconsistent with the new state laws taking effect January 1st. The second larger piece is that the next planning commission agenda, not tomorrow, but the one after that, uh, the first meeting in December, and then it will come to the council as soon as possible with the noticing requirements after that to amend the second unit ordinance entirely to reflect the broader policy decisions made by the council previously and considered by the planning commission previously and to tie up any loose ends that HCD complains about when we forward the urgency ordinance to them. So tonight's is limited and in particular in terms of the, it doesn't rearrange the ordinance broadly and it doesn't conform it to the new state terminology accessory dwelling unit instead of second unit. This is designed to quick and dirty, let's get it compliant with state law and then move from there. Hence it's only for a, it still uses a second unit phrasing. It's an urgency ordinance that requires a four-fifth vote, which means all four of you must vote to approve it tonight. And I'll briefly review what it does. First up, it increases the maximum size for a second unit that is approvable under the second unit protections and is not discretionary up to 1,200 square feet if detached or whichever is lower of 1,200 square feet or 50% of the existing living area for an attached second unit. It provides that second units must meet lot coverage, front, rear, and side setbacks and height and story requirements, except, and this is new, a conversion of an existing legal garage does not have to meet any setback requirements, period. And setbacks for a second unit above an existing legal garage can only be a minimum of five feet from the side and rear lot lines. The underlying front setback for that zone still applies. Those are both straight state provisions that have now been adopted or will be, have been adopted by the state and will be effective January 1st. With respect to parking, the previous rule was that the primary unit needed to meet the parking standards of the zone and there needed to be one additional space, um, for the second unit. Now, parking has been modified fairly substantially by the new state rules. The city can still require the primary unit to meet the minimum parking requirements and can still require one more space for the second unit. However, the second unit's additional space can be provided through tandem parking or any, in any other configuration on the lot, uncovered, covered, tandem, mechanical, automobile parking lifts. And further, if one of five exceptions is met, we can't impose any parking requirement for the second unit. The five exceptions are if the second unit is within a half a mile of a regularly scheduled public transit stop, which would include a trolley stop, or a Gold Coast Transit stop. The second unit is within a city council designated historic district, of which we now have one. If the second unit is part of the existing primary residence or an existing accessory structure, in other words, an internal conversion, we can't impose parking requirements. And, uh, fourth, if there are on-street parking permit required, permits required for the area but not offered to the second unit, that doesn't hit anything in this city, but we include it in the ordinance should the council ever adopt residential preferential parking standards and to be consistent with state law. And lastly, if there's a publicly accessible car-share vehicle parking location within one block. I don't believe there are any in the city, but if there ever are, that would be protected as well. And lastly, with respect to second-story second units and discretionary review, the current ordinance provides that only second units in the first story are exempt from discretionary review. The new law tweaks that. Now we can provide, and what I've drafted here is in design to impose that requirement as much as we can. This is Section 6 on page 211. It provides that a second unit that meets the rest of the standards and is either shorter than 15 feet, no tall on 15 feet, i.e. first story, but phrases a height limit. So you don't even get into definitions of first for second story. And alternatively, is within the building envelope and an existing second story that has independent exterior access and for which the side and rear setbacks are adequate for fire safety, then the design review permit is not required. What that means in English is if you have a first-story second unit shorter than 15 feet or the proposed second unit is fully within the building envelope of the existing legal residence, then it does not require discretionary review. But if you're going, if the applicant proposes to expand the second story or add a first story and add a second story, that would trigger design review. And I think that's the extent of what we can require under state law. And the, the clear implication is that previously the city was requiring a design review permit and planning commission review for any second unit in the second story, even within an existing second story. Now, if they meet that requirement, that it be within the building envelope, have an independent exterior access and have adequate setbacks for fire safety, we can no longer require a discretionary review permit for that limited category of second units. And then the sequel is exempt as this is required. That's what's proposed before you tonight. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of the council? No? All right, I do have some speakers cards on this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wayne Maynard, resident on Greeley Road. And I want to encourage the council to approve this ordinance tonight. I think it's important to get a good foothold. I've studied, uh, the legislation a little bit and then read through the ordinance. I think it's a good move. A couple of comments and I'm, I'm, I think my comments can probably be addressed in perhaps the second version of this, uh, but I'd just like to identify what I, a couple of concerns that I have. First of all, appreciate the city attorney's application of the fire sprinkler requirements, his interpretation of the law. It's, uh, quite confusing and I think he has a really good, uh, proposal on how it should be applied. So I just wanted to thank him for that. The second is with regards to the ordinance on, um, Attachment A, um, Section 3 with regards to maximum size. I'd, I'd like to see it clarified in the ordinance that the 1,200 square feet does not include an attached garage or an attached carport, which I believe is the, uh, the intent of that. If it's not, then it should be clear that it is, that, uh, an attached garage or carport is included in the 1,200 square feet, but right now it's ambiguous, I believe. The other thing that, um, is quite, is confusing to me and it's in the state law, so I'm not sure there's much we can do about it other than to apply a local interpretation of what we think the law means. And that is for the second dwelling units that are built internal of an existing building, it allows you to add up the, uh, the square footage of the existing house inclusive of the basement and the attic, which doesn't make any sense to me unless those are considered habitable basements and habitable attics. And so I think if we were to include that in our, our ordinance, that that's the only space that we're going to include. Otherwise you're going, the, the size goes very large for the second dwelling unit.
So, so that was add the word habitable?
Yeah, where it says inclusive of any basement and attic, I would say inclusive of any habitable basement and attic. Uh, the other issue, if we move to Section 4 of the proposed ordinance, uh, it's basically down at the last line and it talks about the, uh, the state's requirements of limiting setbacks to five feet from the rear and side property lines if you build, uh, on top of an existing legal garage. The problem I have with the way that's written is that you could have a, um, a standard rear yard setback of 20 feet and you can build a second story on top of this existing legal garage and there's nothing to prevent you from cantilevering it out to, uh, five feet from the back property line. And so I think that, uh, that should probably be changed to, to clarify that those setbacks only apply, uh, when the second dwelling unit is within the footprint of the existing legal garage. Uh, the last issue, and I don't think it's anything, uh, we can really do much about is this regularly scheduled public transit stop. I hate to see us, um, make somebody's unit become illegal because some transit district changes their stops, you know? So I think maybe if in our ordinance, if we identify that it's the public transit stop at the time that the building permit application is received, so that somebody doesn't have to worry about their second dwelling unit becoming illegal someday in the future because the transit stop is moved. Those are my comments and like I said, I, maybe we can accomplish these more in the next phase. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. I appreciate it. Steve Quilice?
Thank you. Steve Quilice, uh, resident on West Eucalyptus. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Excuse me, um, to follow up on the previous speaker, I'd like to know what the definition of an attic is. I happen to have a very steep roof on my house and you can actually walk around in the attic because of that, but a lot of places aren't like that. Do we have the same definition? Anything above the ceiling and below the roof is attic? Because that makes a big difference in what 50% of the existing house is in terms of a limit on building and extension. Um, second, excuse me, uh, I've read, I've read this material and it's still not clear to me what parts of the new, that is modified by this action, second unit ordinance go beyond the state minimum requirements. Um, if there's a lot, I'd be interested to hear what it is. If it's something objective like sizes, things that have numbers with it, that's one thing. If it is maintaining consistency with the neighborhood or words of that sort, I'm not sure what we're accomplishing by that. And if there isn't anything really that takes us beyond the state minimum requirements with these modifications, then what you could do is do nothing and just let the state language go into effect on the 1st of January, if it makes no difference in what the rules are around here. Uh, last, I'm, just, just a query, is there any plan to require that a second unit owner live on the property? Uh, we've, we've had a lot of talk about hosted and unhosted short-term rentals, but I'm wondering even about long-term rentals. Is there any requirement that the owner and, and be resident in the primary property in order to even have a long-term rental of a second unit? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quilice. Anything you want to answer there, Mr. Summers?
Sure. Happy to answer a couple of those questions. Um, in order, with respect to adding habitable to basement and attic in Section 3, amending Section 10-21709 subdivision C1, um, that would be reasonable and is consistent with the underlying definition for the phrase living area in the new state law, which defines living area as the interior habitable area of a dwelling unit including basements and attics, but does not include a garage or any accessory structure. Um, so I would be fine with adding habitable as it's consistent with the state law. And that kind of helps provide a definition for the word attic. There's no attic definition in the state law, so I would apply a standard definition of space above the ceiling, below the hard roof line, but with the added caveat of habitable, you take it out of the realm of any attic and put it in the realm of attics that are air-conditioned space, bearing in mind that the standard definition of habitable is of a sufficient size to accommodate a person and conditioned. With respect to why, pardon me, with respect to what's different in here above the state minimums and the broader question of why I adopt, why do something now? Couple of points. One, I recommend adopting something rather than letting the state take effect by default because there's a decent argument, although it's never been tested, because this is a new law and that there are arguments we could use against it if we had to, that if we don't adopt something, the entire ordinance is preempted and replaced by the state law. If I had to, I would argue that we should be able to interlineate what's not spoken to by the state law, but HCD will take the position that the whole thing is thrown out if we don't conform it to their requirements. And there's pieces of the remainder of this ordinance that we can continue to have, for example, a design review permit for second-story second units outside the existing building. Those are worth keeping. And my recommendation to the councils, those are worth keeping. Um, and do you want to comment on that?
I just want you to address the, uh, additional language of constructed within a, the footprint of an existing legal garage.
Yes, I will get to that in a moment. Um, with respect to the other piece that I've modified or added on top of filling in some of the gaps in the state law, with respect to those five parking exemptions, bear with me a moment, um, the state bill didn't define public transit, so I recommend you add in regularly scheduled public transit stop, filling in that element. The next one didn't define, this, the next one on second exemption, the bill says architecturally and historically significant historic district. I've added to be consistent with the city's own zoning power council designated historic district. And with respect to car-share vehicle, I've added publicly accessible car-share vehicle regular parking location to deal with the problem that a very strict reading of the statute would provide that anywhere you park a zipcar or car-share vehicle is a car-share vehicle. That can't be, that defies the test of reason. So I recommend that the council add in language that it be when a car-share vehicle is regularly parked and not just wherever it may be parked. And with respect to Mr. Maynard's question about, uh, unit approved without added parking near, within half a mile of a regularly scheduled public transit stop, that the stop is later moved, the unit would become legal, non-conforming, not illegal. It would continue to have the right to exist once they secure a building permit and exercise substantial, um, construction and begin substantial construction in reliance on the building permit. At that point, invested right attaches. They continue to have the right to use the unit. And to get to the next point, um, I'm fine with adding the requirement that it be setbacks for a second unit constructed above and within the footprint of an existing legal garage, shall be minimum of five feet from side and rear lot lines. And I think I've answered all the questions.
The one about, uh, requiring someone to live in the main house?
Ah, yes. Bear with me for a moment on that one. That's on a different sheet. Under the new state law, the city continues to have the power to require that one of the two, that it be owned and occupied. When the council considered the question previously, in particular whether to require it be owner-occupied, um, the planning commission stated that they like to add a hardship clause to that requirement, allowing either the planning commission or the director to relieve the property owner from the requirement to have it be owner-occupied, one of the two units. And the council's direction was let's have some options on that. As I see it, the current requirement in the code does require that it be owner-occupied. That continues to be within the power of the council to adopt. The council's previous direction was we'd like some options. That's not covered in tonight's ordinance because what you have now, what the city has now can continue to be, can continue. But the council had previously directed the planning commission to consider... But the council had previously directed the planning commission to consider options.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to address this, or I don't have any other speakers' cards? No? Well, I'll bring it back to, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion.
I'll offer a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the ordinance, urgency ordinance of the city council, the city of Ojai, amending municipal code 10-2.1709 governing second residential units to conform to new state statutory mandated second unit ordinance requirements with two amendments, and if I don't cover them, I'll add more. One is to add the word habitable between existing and living. Existing habitable living area, the primary unit inclusive of any habitable basement and attic. I think it'd be good to put habitable in there twice. And then the second is to add the phrase constructed within a footprint of, in section four, five, the last paragraph, in other words, setbacks for a second unit constructed within a footprint of, above an existing legal garage shall be a minimum of five feet. And I think that covers it. You answered the rest of questions, and that's my motion.
The other things that Matt had discussed, is that incorporated into that motion as you stated?
I believe he already had them in there.
Okay.
Yeah, everything else was already built into one another definitions.
All right. Do we have a second? Okay, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Blatts?
Yes.
And thank you for the comments. Very helpful.
Excellent comments. All right, moving on into agenda item number three, is a proposed urgency ordinance relating certain aspects of the cultivation, use, and delivery of marijuana based on Prop 64. Mr. McClary?
Just thinking, Mr. Mayor, I think we have a few people here tonight perhaps to speak on that. I'll turn it over to the city attorney for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, mayor and council. The second urgency item, reflecting recent changes in state law, as you're all aware. On Tuesday, the voters considered many questions, one of which was proposition 64. Proposition 64 legalizes medical and recreational marijuana statewide, and if you'll give me a brief moment, I'll review the key provisions, and then the draft urgency ordinance on your desk. Prop 64 legalizes medical marijuana for all persons over 18, pardon me, yeah, 18, and legalizes recreational marijuana for persons at least 21 years of age, same as alcohol. It creates a state-run system to license and regulate commercial marijuana operations, applies new taxes for medical and recreational marijuana excise taxes, but eliminates the sales tax on medical marijuana, and adjusts the penalties for marijuana-related crimes, and provides an opportunity for those who've previously been convicted of certain marijuana crimes to seek to reduce their sentences. I'm not going to cover the criminal provisions in greater detail, as that isn't relevant to your land use power. As of Tuesday, it is lawful to smoke or ingest marijuana in a private residence. The city has no power to outlaw that. It is unlawful to smoke or ingest marijuana in any public place unless the city affirmatively permits it, and even then, it may only be in a business that meets the three, following three requirements. Licensed by the city to allow smoking or ingestion of marijuana on the premises, marijuana consumption is in an area restricted to persons 21 and older, and is not visible from any public place or age restricted area, non-age restricted area, and there's no allowance or consumption of alcohol or tobacco. The city has the power to prohibit all of that, and prohibit thus the cafe or the marijuana consumption onsite in a business. That is one of the elements on the table in the draft ordinance, which would prohibit smoking or ingesting marijuana in any public place, including a business of that kind, and thus would bar state licenses. It is now lawful to cultivate up to six marijuana plants on the grounds of a private residence, provided that the plants are in a locked space and are not visible by unaided vision from a public place. The city has the power to ban outdoor cultivation of any number of plants. That is in the second item that's in the draft ordinance on your desk, a proposed ban on outdoor cultivation. And the city has the power to reasonably regulate, but not completely prohibit, private cultivation inside a private residence or inside an accessory structure on the grounds of a private residence. In a moment, I'll discuss options for that, but there's no provision in the current draft for the city to do that, as we need this in policy direction before we draft, quote, "reasonable regulations" for the city on that ground. The state is expected to begin issuing licenses for recreational marijuana businesses starting January 1st, 2018, a year from now. The statewide requirements for the recreational marijuana businesses will be, unless the city specifies a different radiance that cannot be within 600 feet of a K through 12 school, daycare center, or a youth center, they cannot sell tobacco or alcohol, they have to abide by restrictions regarding marketing and sale to minors, and they may only, and they can permit onsite consumption if locally allowed, as discussed previously. The draft ordinance on your desk would ban onsite consumption. The city retains fairly broad authority to impose further restrictions on medical and recreational marijuana businesses, or to completely ban medical and recreational marijuana businesses. However, in the absence of any state rule on any one aspect, the state restrictions will apply. This is where the requirements for medical and recreational marijuana differ. For medical marijuana businesses, they may only operate if they have both a state and a local license, and again, the state licenses won't be issued until January 1st, 2018. Current businesses operating in gray area. Recreational marijuana businesses are allowed to operate with just a state license unless a local license is required. It's an easier regime for the recreational businesses, reflecting the drafters of Prop 64. With respect to the fiscal issues, Prop 64 eliminated sales tax on medical marijuana, which will continue to create an incentive for medical marijuana consumption, or businesses. It imposes a sales tax on recreational marijuana. In effective January 1st, 2018, tied to the issuance of the state licenses, a state excise tax will be imposed on both medical and recreational marijuana. The city retains the power, with voter approval, to impose other taxes and/or on either recreational or medical, or one or the other. City also retains the power with council approval and an appropriate fee study behind it to impose reasonable fees tied to your regulatory power, provided that the justification exists for the fees, for the amount of the fee imposed. Turning to what is before you, this draft urgency ordinance, it is structured to create a new chapter in article, title four, which is the public welfare title, entitled Chapter 25 Marijuana Use and Cultivation. This is intended to be a vehicle to allow, both accomplishing the three things that I'll mention for tonight's ordinance, but to be a vehicle to allow the council's future decisions on marijuana regulations to have a place to go. The first one, section one provides a number of definitions, largely mirroring the state Operative provisions. The new section 425-02 is on page 37 or attachment A, page 3 of 5, would prohibit smoking or ingesting marijuana or marijuana products in any public place or in any location where smoking tobacco is prohibited. This would include thus any of those businesses that might otherwise be licensed if we don't, if the city does not prohibit it. Section 425-03 prohibits outdoor cultivation, anywhere in the city, with no exceptions. Section 424, 425-04 governs deliveries and would, and provides, if adopted, would provide that delivery of marijuana or marijuana products for recreational use is prohibited, regardless of any state license, but delivery for medical use of marijuana or marijuana products would be permitted with a license from the city manager on an application form to be created by him and standards to be adopted by him, and provides in section 425-05 that violations would be punishable as a misdemeanor or an infraction at the discretion of the city attorney or the DA. In addition, any civil nuisance abatement action could be brought in the appropriate case. With respect to additional options before you, there was some discussion as this was being drafted of adding a provision allowing non-storefront recreational dispensaries. That did not make it into the final version of the packet, but that would be another option to you, would be to, and I have language available, is needed to provide for a city license for a non-storefront, non-retail dispensary to provide medical marijuana only with a license issued by the city manager under standards adopted by him, under an application fee adopted by him, that would allow the complete chain of deliveries for medical purposes to patients in the city. They would not be, such a facility would not be able to have a retail component. No one could walk in and purchase items, and it couldn't be located in any way that would have a retail element, but it would allow, if adopted, a delivery service to be run from within the city at the moment. If that is not adopted, the current ordinance would permit medical marijuana delivery services, leaving unsaid where the marijuana comes from. The expectation is that the deliveries would start at facilities outside the city as permitted by whatever regulations govern the facility where they begin. The additional, the last point to bear in mind is that with respect to indoor cultivation, city, as I noted before, has the power to reasonably regulate but not prohibit indoor cultivation, and it could draw a distinction between indoor private cultivation versus indoor commercial cultivation. For example, the city could ban indoor commercial cultivation and permit, but regulate, rather, regulate indoor private cultivation. The city can't ban indoor private cultivation of up to six plants per private residence. And on the staff report on page three of, page two, we put in some examples of where seeing some other cities and the League of Cities recommend, namely, that there be a local requirement for a permit for residential cultivation with an appropriate fee, and that as a condition of the permit, the cultivator agreed to periodic inspections with appropriate notice to ensure that the cultivation doesn't exceed the six-plant limit, create a fire hazard, as is sometimes the case with unlicensed marijuana grows, doesn't present a health hazard, and doesn't use more water than needed to cultivate six plants. And you could adopt additional standards there in terms of the safety aspects of cultivation and the better-run cultivation centers versus the more back alley, fly-by-night types that can result in warehouse fires and so forth. And accomplish, or include express requirements to comply with the fire code, the building code. In other words, if they're going to have grow lights, that they actually be wired by a licensed electrician instead of just duct taped together. Given that we were, we did not have policy direction from the council on that, we didn't draft reasonable regulations for indoor cultivation, but that's within the council's power to do. And the sheriff's department wanted me to note, Captain Kinney, that one area where the sheriff's department is mindful of the enforceability concerns that arise with this is that the requirement is no more than six plants per residence, but if there's no permit requirement and no inspection requirement tied to that permit, it's very difficult to enforce that. If the city would, if the council is interested in ensuring that the indoor grows that exist in the city are safe or are more safe, nothing is ever absolute, then requiring a permit and an inspection provides a tool to ensure that that is met while still ensuring that, as is now state law, any resident may cultivate up to six plants per residence. And note that that's six plants per resident, not six plants per person. So if you have two people, you get three each, or six and one, or six and zero, you should have to share. But if you had, say, a multifamily residence with a four-unit, a quadplex, that would be up to 24 plants divided six each. And I'm available for further questions.
Yeah, just to be clear on that, excuse me, Mayor.
Right in.
So six plants per residential unit, so a multifamily apartment, each unit, six plants?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if you had, bordering on the previous discussion, primary unit and a second unit, second unit gets six plants as well.
And then on a primary residence with a second unit on it, if you have two people living, two separate families living there, that's two residences, six plants each?
That's correct. If it's two separate households, it's then six each.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify. Matthew, I just wanted to clarify the rental side of it. In a rental agreement, can, can anyone not allow the growing of marijuana in a rental unit?
Yes, that is correct. Landlords retain the power by contract to prohibit marijuana growing on all of their properties. This, the Prop 64 just speaks to what the state has the power, and by extension, the cities have the power to do, but any landlord has the power to prohibit that in their private lease.
Mayor Blatts, in terms of, in terms of outdoor cultivation, what regulations, if we decide to allow for outdoor cultivations, what does the Prop 64, does it have some regulations built into that? What, what we need to, what the residents have to do to grow them outdoors?
Prop 64 does not have any regulations built in regarding outdoor cultivation, just that the city has the power to regulate or prohibit it. If the city wished to allow outdoor cultivation, I would recommend establishing some regulations for it, for, which could include permit requirement, an inspection requirement, a requirement that the plants not be visible from public right-of-way, not be visible from neighbors, a requirement that the plants not be smellable evidence, olfactory evidence not cross the property line to the neighbors, and a requirement that the water used to water the plants be, for lack of a better word, legitimate. In other words, that they be drawing water from their main water connection and not tapping into the neighbor's pipe or pulling it out of a creek or something.
All right. I've got several speakers' cards. The first one is Lenny Clave. Is he gone? Lenny, you're around?
Evening, council people. I just want to say I hope that you allow outdoor cultivation, trying to limit people to growing pot indoors for even personal use for a plant. It's ridiculous in a climate like this, and to have to add the, you know, waste of electricity of putting in grow lights to have a pot plant if you need medical marijuana or whatever. You know, if we're allowed to grow, if you own your property, you should be allowed to have a plant in your yard, and I, it's fine if you can't see it from the street and all that, but it just seems ridiculous in this climate to, it's a weed, for God's sakes. It grows. Let it grow, okay? It's just stupid. I just think it's a waste of, you know, resources to limit it to indoors. That's, you know, anyway, okay, thank you. And I, you know, and can't you smoke in bars or outside? I guess I know how you're always 600 feet from a school, though, so there's that. Anyway, thanks.
My name is Sarah Armstrong. I'm Director of Industry Affairs for Americans for Safe Access. Founded in 2002, we are the oldest and largest patient advocacy group for medical cannabis patients. I come before you today to ask you to move forward to begin exploring and enacting laws that will allow both delivery services, and if that works well for you, walk-in dispensaries. Delivery services are the lifeline for patients in this county. Between 2010 and the present time, we voted twice to legalize marijuana. The first time, it failed in this county because there was safe access. Between that time and now, we have seen it destroyed, city by city by city. Patients are left with nothing, and when you have nothing, you grasp at something, and that something was legalization. You have a clear mandate. This city voted for legalization in greater numbers than any other city in the county. You enjoy the support of your citizens as you move forward for safe access. I beg you to do so. Many, many people have been affected by the recent raids, both on Sespe Creek and Shangri-La. They were unnecessary and cruel. Please restore the right of patients to use medical marijuana and let them be. We need this here, and we will benefit from it. I have helped regulate in many other cities in California, and when they move slowly and judiciously, they never had any problems. There has been a lot of hatred and fear-mongering going around, around this issue. I think it's time for the city of Ojai to reflect the will of its people and move forward with safe access, not backwards. I thank you for your time and your consideration. It is deeply appreciated. I spent the last three months of my life in Los Angeles trying to head off a voter initiative launched by a group of wealthy dispensary owners who wish to award themselves valuable franchises. If you regulate, that can never happen here. People in Ojai are sensible. They will not be fooled by greedy backers of voter initiatives who come here only to make themselves wealthy. Please do right by the patients in your community and award them the privilege and the right to function under state laws which allow them the use of medical cannabis. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I have a question. Okay. Please keep your... Please keep your applause to a minimum. It's not going to affect us, so.
Sorry.
Currently, no, this isn't a question for the speaker, it's a question for Mr. We had Shangri-La that was operating legally within our city, correct?
As I understand it, yes. I'm not fully, I only caveat because I don't know all of their activities, but they had a permit from the city to operate a office and a limited testing facility in the city.
Okay. So how does this, the proposed medical marijuana, forgetting about the recreational, how does, how does the ordinance affect what's on the books already? Because to my knowledge, we haven't had any other dispensary come forward asking to be permitted within the city.
There was an inquiry about 14, 16 months ago from some individuals interested in a dispensary. They were, the prior city manager indicated to them that the zoning code prohibits dispensaries, which does at the moment by virtue of permissive zoning, and they decided to go elsewhere. But other than that, there's been no inquiries that I'm aware of with respect to any dispensaries seeking to operate in the city, and all dispensaries are presently prohibited via the fact that the zoning codes, table of allowable land uses, does not speak to commercial marijuana businesses, or marijuana businesses, or dispensaries. And because the code provides that any use not listed is prohibited, they are effectively prohibited, although I'll note that the League of Cities strongly recommends that the city not solely rely on its permissive zoning element in regulating or prohibiting its desired marijuana businesses. But to finish the point, what's proposed wouldn't change the situation with respect to the existing Shangri-La business.
Okay.
So just on the discussion of permiss, on permissible.
Permissive zoning.
Zoning. Can you, can you explain that a little better? So right now, just explain that a little.
Yeah, so the, the basic rule is that Ojai's code says, and I believe it's Section 10, 2, 201 or 202, it provides that only the land uses listed in the land use table for the applicable zone are permitted. Any other land use is not permitted. The exception is if the Community Development Director or the Planning Commissioner of Council on Appeal issued a determination of similarly, similar use, finding that the proposed land use at issue is close enough to one of the listed land uses, that it should be governed by the rules for that listed land use. This came up in the short-term rental debate as well. Short-term rentals are not, are prohibited by the same, by virtue of the same law, the requirement that only land uses listed in the table be, are permitted, and short-term rentals are not a listed land use in any, in any of the tables, with the exception of lawfully permitted hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts. Applied to the marijuana situation, nothing in the zoning code permits marijuana businesses, or dispensaries, or collectives, or any of the synonyms for those businesses. As such, they're prohibited.
And how did Shangri-La get their license?
Shangri-La got their license because Shangri-La is operating an office and a limited testing facility. They fit under the office provision, and they fit under a provision for testing facilities. They were prohibited and are prohibited from doing anything storefront, or retail, or anything where they're directly selling marijuana to the public from that facility. And that's how they fit into that, threaded that needle.
Okay. Mayor Protimore.
Couple things on these points I wanted to raise. Number one, I'm not sure I understand your answer, because we have a new state law for medical marijuana licensing, or cannabis licensing, since that we've not acted on in terms of implementing.
And on that one, that state law also has not yet in fully effect.
But it allows all the licenses prior to the issuance of state regulations, I believe.
It does, but they don't mean anything, because you can only operate a medical marijuana business with both a local license and a state license.
I understand that, okay, but I'm just saying, it does allow us to do what we can.
If the city wishes to do so.
All right, and then, second of all, and the idea of permitting zoning, I think you, you hit on something very important in your discussion that I think I need to clarify, and I think should be clarified. There are allowable uses for things like pharmaceutical preparations.
Right.
For things like agricultural products, for retail. In other words, there are ways it could be fit in, in terms of licensed activity, into those existing categories fairly easily in some instances.
If the Community Development Director, on the full facts presented before her or him, made that decision, and the, and it stood up on appeal, yes.
Right, so if we're talking about getting people their medicine, for example.
There's a path that could be threaded.
Allowable uses for getting people their medicines.
With the path being threaded with particular facts, yes, that's possible.
What I'm, what I'm trying to say, it's not as, there is a, there is a path there. Because what we're talking about tonight is an urgency, the first step, not the last step, not the second or third step. It's just the first step, because we have a situation where people are, have, have been deprived of their medicines now, twice. And, you know, I've said this before, we need to see what we can do to help that situation.
But I also want to make it clear that the city had nothing to do with anything that happened with Shangri-La.
Of course not.
No.
But I didn't, I certainly didn't.
Entirely nothing to do with it.
I'm implying that with the situation as it is now, it's a matter of an urgent situation to do what we can, not in terms of settling all the issues, but do what we can do now until we can get to settling more of the issues.
Yes.
So Mayor, on the, on the same lines, I'm all for this, getting the distribution back to the people in the community that need it, but I also don't want to become Distribution Center Ojai for the county. So is there a way that we can limit the number of distribution points within the community?
Okay.
Frankly, I don't, I, I, I want us to be able to provide medicines to people in this valley. And if there's people outside the valley that need it, I mean, this is about providing medicine to people, and why should we say that we don't want to allow people outside the, the city to have that?
Okay, let's hold on, hold on. We're still in the public comment. Let's save this till when we can bring it back.
Thank you. Mari Scott from the Ventura County Cannabis Alliance. Honorable members of the Ojai City Council, I wanted to begin by thanking the council for taking the time to have study sessions to approach this complicated issue, and for recognizing that this has risen to an emergency status. The city of Ojai has a population of 7,461, almost 20% are 55 and over. Cannabis use among the elderly is increasing. In the 55 to 64 age range, from 2002 to 2014, there was a 455% increase of past month use, according to the CDC. In the 65 and over category, there was a 333% increase. With almost 680 opioid prescriptions written for every thousand Ventura County residents in 2015, it's not surprising that we have a serious opioid epidemic here. Annual emergency room visits by people 65 and over for misuse of pharmaceuticals climbed more than 50% during 2007 to 2011, and the rate of drug overdose deaths among people 55 and older nearly tripled from 1999 to 2010. In 2013, residents of 93023 had a higher prescription opioid death rate than the county and the state. Let's offer a safer solution. I hope you allow for secure outdoor and greenhouse private cultivation because of the cost and ecological footprint compared to indoor, and while I'm grateful that Ojai is considering regulating delivery services, I ask that you allow considering, allowing dispensaries. Not all cannabis patients are computer savvy. They can't navigate the internet to find the medicine they need, in particular, many of our seniors. Even those who can don't receive the medicine they need because they aren't able to have a face-to-face discussion with a knowledgeable person, or they've made a selection based on liking a strain, name, or a picture they see. Also, your nose knows. Aside from cannabinoids like THC and CBD, terpenes are compounds responsible for aromas and flavors. They have mood-enhancing and medicinal properties. Over 100 different terpenes have been identified in the cannabis plant, and every strain has a unique terpene profile and composition. They have the ability to interact synergistically with other compounds in the plant. They also bind to receptor sites and affect chemical output. They can modify how much THC, for example, passes through the blood-brain barrier and even alter dopamine and serotonin levels. Cannabis users like to smell their flowers in order to select what their body needs. If you've ever smelled lavender, you may have experienced a relaxing effect from the terpene linolol, which some strains contain. Cannabis comes in a wide spectrum of flavors, and what smells good to me will not smell good to another patient and is therefore not an appropriate medicine for someone else. Allowing for a small number of regulated storefronts doesn't have to be an out-of-control situation like larger cities have experienced. We want to work with law enforcement. You would know the operators by name, and you will see us as caring, contributing members of the community whose intentions come from our hearts. We want to ensure that we are not a problem, but offer a quality-of-life solution to residents of Ojai. And while it is not your responsibility to bring sensibility to the entire county, we are looking to you to please help pave the way for others by showing that this can be done responsibly. Let's bring safe access to Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Mari. Peggy Lucera?
Hi, I just wanted to say, I was actually asked to be here by a friend. I don't have anything prepared to say, except that I would urge the council to address marijuana across the board as a less dangerous substance than alcohol. It is a less danger, my background is, is in experimental biopsychology. I'm a neuro, I advanced a candidacy in neuropsychopharmacology. I venture a guess that I probably know more about what marijuana does than most people. And it's, alcohol is the sledgehammer of psychotropics. It is no longer illegal because too many people use alcohol. I have a caffeine company. Caffeine is an addictive substance. It's something that we think somewhere upwards of 80% of the public is addicted to. It can be very dangerous for certain people, and nobody treats it as a drug. We say we love our coffee, but it is a strong drug. We don't treat it as a drug because everybody uses it. Everybody doesn't use marijuana because for the lifespan of the people in this room, marijuana has been demonized, be, you know, most people know the history. There, it was, the hemp plant had a fiber that was just a little bit stronger and a little bit cheaper than something produced by DuPont. DuPont, you know, did the Reefer Madness campaign, and it became illegal. It became a Schedule I drug, which was just an absurdity, and it, I think, I don't, I don't even really know what the FDA is doing about it now, but anyway, so I would, I would think that we could show our intelligence as a community by recognizing that it's, marijuana is no more dangerous than alcohol, and as far as smoking it, it should be treated as less dangerous probably than tobacco, because tobacco has a lot of toxic substances added to it. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Peggy.
And look, under the wire.
Jeff Kroll?
Thank you very much for entertaining this emergency discussion. As you know, I'm the president of Shangri-La Care Cooperative, and on, I've given you some handout, there's a top cover of basically a proclamation from some of our original members. Shangri-La, basically, starting in 2009, and Randy Heaney, when in a prior council meeting, mentioned, "What? An, an organization operating here?" Well, we've been operating, at that point, it was five, six-year mark. We've always been kind of under the radar, until, of course, about a year and a month ago, we began to be on the radar. We will be residing, or concluding our situation very shortly. I would like to read this for the record. "The objective of Shangri-La is to distribute cannabis medicines in the form of current licensed commercial location." That's what we are asking. Basically, we've had a wellness center now for over two and a half years. We worked with the city. We made an agreement of how we were going to operate under our business license. We did not break that faith or that trust. No marijuana was distributed or found, or ever was inside 408K1 or K2, as verified by the Sheriff's Department. We've been wanting to make little baby steps along the lines, working with city and the authorities, including the local police department and the Sheriff's Department. We know we have to have a partnership for this to work. We also feel that this image of dispensary has created a fervor of not in my city. We've always been an advocate of a wellness center, a place where we're not just about the medicine, but about the education. Even though Prop 64 has now passed, and it's adult use, I don't like the term recreational, it's really 21 and over. We really are just asking, in this emergency order, to be able to at least do dispensary as either deliveries from our 408 location, doing the securities. I have no problem with the chief of police monitoring and video coming in anytime 24/7. We need to solve the problem of getting medicines to the members. Since the raid on Shangri-La, we have lost, to my knowledge, four people to cancer. Judy E., Edward H., David S., Rachel C. Many of these people, 81, 64, 63, and 35 years of age. There are some individuals in this room now who know these people. Each one of these people had 25 or 30 family members affected, so think of them as well. They want to do whatever they can to help their family member make the transition. Since Sesapee has been raided, I've had 21 phone calls in over a week of people desperately trying to get medicines. Most of these people are here in this valley, and 11 of them are currently in stage four cancer, end of life. They want to use cannabis. They're not well enough to travel, to go to other areas, and in some cases, not even to make it to the front door to pick up or answer the door of a delivery person. And there's a risk factor with delivery. The risk factor is basically, it's in a car. We have money, cash, we don't want that. We really want a safe, secure location that is in an area that the city approves, and we hope we're in that outline. Thank you.
Jeff, I have a quick question for you. It used to be that the only way that you could have any type of a dispensary was if you were dispensing medical marijuana, because the recreational use wasn't permitted. But now recreational use is permitted. How do, what do you see as a difference between a medical marijuana dispensary and just a marijuana dispensary? And why would anybody open up a strictly medical marijuana dispensary? Why would they want to limit it to that when they?
Good question. The people that are the voting members of Shangri-La are in a much longer vision of just the day-to-day use of using cannabis. We're in, and by the way, part of this letter here is, we have just signed our major contract agreement with Steep Hill, the premier laboratory of California and of the United States for cannabis testing. Our first piece of test equipment will arrive next week. The point we're making is, we do believe that cannabis, it's not that we believe that it's a medicine, we know it's a medicine. We've used it ourselves. We think we have the methodology of creating more of a westernized approach of using not smoking, edibles that are not attractive to children, but pill form, suppositories, patches, things that are more westernized. The goal and the mission of Shangri-La was to be a leading example of how a medical wellness center could be used to help educate, because there's a lot of misinformation about how to use it, how to consume it, and what type of strains and the chemical makeup. We've always been about testing since 2009. We are going to continue this. If we can't get some inroads in the relatively new, in the near future, we, there are other areas. We want to develop westernized contemporary medicines from cannabis. So that's what So that's what you have to have, a wellness center to do that.
And that's—I understand that, and there's no question about the medical benefits of marijuana.
Okay.
And when—the only way that you would be able to offer medical or marijuana at all was in a medical setting—
That's all we want is—
But Shangri-La was doing the testing and doing the strains and being in the forefront of that. But what I'm saying is that why would anybody limit themselves to just medical marijuana if they're allowed to sell it to everyday users? Why wouldn't you want to do both?
At this point, no one can do recreational or adult sales marijuana until January of 2018.
No, I understand that, but I'm looking into the future.
In the future, personally, I feel that the actual benefit to society is the adoption of cannabis or more homeopathic remedies. Ojai has over a hundred-year history of wellness and spiritualism. It's what it's this coun—this—not country, but what we wish the whole country was about. But we are about something of difference, compassion. That's the wellness meaning. That's the future of developing and listening to members. Tell us what works, what doesn't work, and how we hone in using testing and research and trying to create good jobs.
I have one question.
Yes. Any questions?
Stuart, maybe I'm missing something, but distribution. So your wellness center is for people coming into you.
We need—
I'm just—I just—I just want to get—clarify it for myself. I'm thinking I'm lost here. But you want to have the capabilities of distributing it to your members, so taking it from your location on Bryant Street and delivering it to whoever needs it in the Ojai—
We would not—we would be doing that, but the point—
You would be doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. But we've never—we've never been allowed to have a sample of a medicine in front of someone during the teaching of that medicine.
Okay, so I guess that's where I'm lost on. If you're—if you're going to distribute it, that means you have it on-site. Am I correct?
Correct. It needs to be secured, in safe, bolted to the ground, security cameras. There's lots of considerations. We have to work out these. But you want a commercial location. You want to be able to have a place that—if it has sprinkler systems, concrete floor, stuff that's in the right zoning, all of that—that's why we chose where we're at now. I only need a very—we were only asked for the testing of Shangri-La laboratory was two and a half pounds is what we were allowed to have within our footprint, only after the laboratory was equipped and the city building inspectors would come and sign off. Then we would—
And that was the agreement that you had with us.
Yes, that was the agreement back—
That was the agreement that you had worked out with our past city manager.
Right. Correct. But—but what I'm trying to get at, and I'm still—you're not—you're not—I don't—I'm not hearing the answer to my question.
Perhaps, Mr. Mayor, I can offer an answer.
Okay. Well, first of all, let me just say that we're not talking about what you were permitted to do because the law has changed. And if we change what you can do now, it's going to be a new—it's going to be a new dawn on this. But what I'm trying to get at is, if a medical marijuana dispensary for medical purposes can deliver—let's assume that for a minute. But if you have a recreational marijuana sales, whatever you're going to call it, that can't deliver, right?
Well, it would depend on what the rules that the city adopts.
We could say anybody could—
Yeah, you could adopt that regime.
Then why would anybody just open up a medical marijuana facility? Why wouldn't they want to sell to the biggest broad audience they could?
The expectation—the expectation is that, at least as I see it, there would be a couple of reasons that folks might make that choice, to just do medical. One is the—as I think you're seeing tonight—a strong belief that medical marijuana is something distinct from adult use of recreational marijuana. It's a article of faith for those who are of that mindset. And for them, there's a clear distinction to be drawn, simply on a basis of the user category and the focus of the facility, nothing about the market share that they are adopting. The second reason is taxation. Medical marijuana is exempt from the sales tax. Recreational marijuana is subject to sales tax, which result means that your pricing can be different, which would adjust the finances of the facilities. And the permitting is—I guess that one goes the other way. Permitting is somewhat easier for recreational businesses than for medical businesses. That one goes the other way. But I think the biggest thing is that article of faith element and the taxation.
I—I still—everybody that uses marijuana prior to Prop 64 had to have a medical recommendation. So what's going to keep people from continuing to get the medical rec—the recommendation if they don't have to pay tax on it?
The expectation is that there will continue to be a significant number of medical certifications, medical—what's the phrase? Doctor's recommendations. Given that reality, at the same time, it's a hoop to jump through. And if an individual is interested in recreational use and is willing to spend the money on the taxes, they may just do that because it's easier.
The—the other national mandate is there were eleven—I mean, sorry, seven—nine initiatives across the country. Eight of them passed about marijuana in some form or another. That's basically a mandate telling the federal government that their Schedule I is non-tenable. And that may be forced to change very shortly. As soon as it's put on Schedule II, III, IV, V, it's not a taxable event. It's considered to be under the protection of the federal non-taxation for prescription medications. Doctors will be able to prescribe it. Right now, a doctor cannot—they don't tell a patient, "Go home, roll a joint, and smoke it." Doctors don't normally want to give that kind of advice. They want something that's more dosable, more quantifiable, and properly tested.
Okay. All right. Monica Lindsay?
Thank you, Ojai City Council, for allowing me to address you. I know that the meeting is scheduled to end soon per the Brown Act. Got kids asleep out in the—in the lobby there. Thank you for having us. I have attended many city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and Board of Supervisors meetings as the community outreach coordinator for Sespe Creek Collective. I also stand before you as a survivor of stage three breast cancer. I can tell you that for two years before I was diagnosed, I knew I had cancer, and I kept hearing that CBD would stop the spread of it. Being a collective that focuses on medical patients and medical patients only, Sespe Creek focused on having a lot less psychoactive forms of medicine available for the very group that Mari spoke of, which are the seniors. The people in the community want a wide range of medicine. You know, there's a lid for every pot, and there's a pot for every patient, like she spoke about the terpenes. Each variety is different, and it will do different things. That is a benefit to having a storefront where you can actually engage someone in the process of learning about the medicine, choosing the medicine that is appropriate for them. Also, things like establishing minimum effective doses are very important. You don't want to hear the horror stories, you know, from other less responsible areas that just, you know, give Grandma brownie and tell her good luck. You want to be able to figure out exactly how much you're taking, just like a lot of patients are starting to find that they're needing a lot less of their prescription medications because a lot of the functions, you know, that cannabis does are a lot of the things that they're taking those medicines for, things like blood pressure. There are certain things that can affect the way the cannabis user is affected by taking the medicines, along with other things. So we encourage responsible exploration. We want people to learn, you know, those minimum effective doses. There are ways to approach this responsibly. The reason that you would want to stay a medical facility—or I know why we still wanted to be focused on medical patients—is I'm a patient myself right now. I got the sweet Afro thanks to cannabis. I stopped my chemo after only three treatments, and Gold Coast won't pay for my estrogen blockers. So I'm kind of banking on the fact that cannabis has kept me cancer-free, and I'm hoping that it still does. I was born in Ojai, and I'm very, very proud to know that this community has enough compassion and common sense to understand that this is medicine. I wish that I could get him to come here, but there's a guy by the name of Dr. Raphael Meshulam. He's the godfather of THC. Right now, he's kicking butt over in Israel, making so many scientific breakthroughs on the efficacy of cannabis. There's a guy out in Florida who has the magical butter machine, Garen Angel. Please, Google him, learn about him. He's making amazing inroads with cannabis as medicine. He says eat to treat with that machine. So many ways to consume this medicine. There are so many appropriate applications for it in Ojai's climate. I would also please consider some kind of way to responsibly regulate outdoor cultivation because it does have a more environmentally friendly appeal, and our climate is very suited for it. Thank you, Ojai.
Thank you, Ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Linnea Braun?
Good evening. I just learned about this meeting at 7:15, so I don't come with a big speech. But I did bring props. Okay. On the 11th of December this last year, I was diagnosed with triple positive breast cancer. I'm 66 years old. I live in Oakview. I have a very healthy life. There's no reason I should have cancer, but I do. My options after a CT scan were to take two forms of chemo, have the complete breast taken off, everything else you can imagine, and it would have cost me $30,000 as a copay with Medicare just for the chemo. Okay? They cannot find a site. They only have a lymph node. I researched online. I'm just going to give you a few. I know you know about most of this. There's a McAllister—Dr. McAllister in San Francisco. He spent ten years researching breast cancer. CBD oil for marijuana kills breast cancer through apoptosis. It's an internal killing. It does not hurt the tissues at all. The chemo explodes it, and that's why you get inflammation. Harvard has done research. And recently, the National Institute of Health has published that CBD oil and medical marijuana kills cancer. So you're going to have a lot of different pharmaceuticals now looking for that. I had to go to Woodland Hills. I did not know what to do, but I knew I wanted CBD oil. So I asked surreptitiously at a cancer center that helps people in Oxnard—I can't mention the name—and they told—someone told me where to go, and I got my license in Woodland Hill. I had to go to a doctor. I did not know because doctors here are not allowed to do it. My doctor supports it, but she can only give me the three that I mentioned: surgery, radiation, and coloogy. So luckily, I found Sespe. I do not want to drive to Woodland Hills every single week because I need a gram a day. That's a lot. Okay? This is what comes. When Sespe comes, the delivery boy—or delivery woman or man comes in a dress nicely, even better than I am, with this package at the door. You pay cash. You get your CBD oil, mine is 20 to 1, which is best for my type of cancer. You get a receipt, and it's all in a bag. I even had a guest at the house, and this person showed up, and I said, "I just have to pick up something." No one knew what was going on. For me, that's important. I'm 66. I don't want to go to a dispensary in Woodland Hill. Okay? First of all, it takes too much time. It takes too much energy. I have cancer. I would like to tell you, in three months, I am cancer-free, completely because of CBD oil. So this is just to suggest to you that having dispensed—having home delivery is really important. The rest, you can work out yourselves. I don't—personally don't want to grow plants. I have enough money, but I don't have a lot. And Sespe offers a compassionate care discount, so instead of spending $90 a gram, I'm spending 73. It comes in this form. It tells me how much of each kind of CBD it has, how much THC it has, so I know exactly what I'm getting. And I just put it a little bit on my finger, and I rub it into the gums, and I'm cancer-free now. It's very simple. I saved $30,000. My doctor, who is well-known in this whole area, is just so ecstatic, and she's going to be suggesting this to other people. She can't recommend it, she's—you know, because she's licensed. The other thing I've done is I've talked to a number of nurses and doctors in Ojai, in Oakview, in Oxnard. Everywhere I go, I tell them about this, and I tell them how easy it is to work with sespe.org. And there are another number of women like myself who do not want to go to a dispensary in Woodland Hills or further, where you never know who you're going to meet. But that's different in Ojai because people here are very decent and et cetera, and would love to have it delivered to the home. A gentleman here—I'm sorry, I don't remember which one of you—suggested that you did not want to have home delivery outside of Ojai. Please, we are a compassionate community. Most of the people I've suggested Sespe to do not live in Ojai. Most of them live elsewhere, and if there's no place else that they can get medical marijuana, they may die. There are other benefits. There are 20 different illnesses and different conditions that medical marijuana works with and works with incredibly well, with no side effects. So please, be compassionate and open-minded and foresighted because we need this. As human beings, we need this. And if you could set it up here to dispense other places, you would be helping a lot of people.
Thank you.
Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't have any other speakers' cards. Is there anyone wishing to address us? I do have one more.
Thank you. My name is Chelsea Satula. I am the CEO of Sespe Creek Collective. We were raided on November 3rd. I've never been in trouble in my life or anything, and I'm here speaking to you today as a political refugee in my own county and in my own home. I can tell you why there are some people that don't—are not interested in capitalizing on the recreational market. It's because we're not all interested in money over principles and health and wellness. I truly don't care about the 23-year-olds doing bong rips and getting—having dabs, okay? I don't care, and I don't want to serve those people because they complicate my life and they bring danger to my staff. I'm interested in serving medical patients with legitimate needs that aren't going to BS me around, that are going to answer the phone call when the driver comes, that are going to have their cash ready. So we're not doing this in a weird—even more weird way than it already has to be. This is—this is people with serious illness. Since this raid has shut us down, I get messages every day from people with brain cancer, "Where can I get my oil? I'm lost without you guys. What am I going to do?" This is the only patient that could get here tonight because most of them are sick and they're scared, and they don't want to be outed. They don't want to be known as the cancer patient that takes medical marijuana, that's fighting for their life and their rights to use that. You are the last option in Ventura County. We've been begging for licenses since January, when you all rolled the bans out and said, "We will get back to this and think about it in a compassionate way really soon." Well, guess what? Soon is over. This is now. People are dying right now. People are sick and scared, and I'm a refugee, and I don't deserve it. I've done nothing wrong but help people in Ojai, throughout the valley, throughout the county, with medicine they can't find anywhere else in Southern California because it's not about getting them high, it's about getting them well. You are the last hope. It's not about bringing money and tourists. I can tell you, if all your patients have to drive to LA, your traffic problems are going to get a lot worse. You can ask me any question you want. I'm an open book. I was given a great gift to be on your study group with Mayor Pro Tem Wirick. We had this all ironed out. So I'm sad that it has to be an urgency issue because it was kind of ready to roll a few months ago. I hope I—I can lend more transparency than I've already had to lend. My books are open. I have nothing to hide. Legitimate operators have nothing to hide. I pay taxes. The Board of Equalization is upset right now that my funds are seized. Because guess what? That's their money. Twenty people filed for unemployment in this county, and yet Ventura County is lagging in economic growth and jobs. It's up to you guys, honestly, and the next—and the next council. Or we're all taking our medicine and wellness elsewhere, and I don't think that's who Ojai wants to be. I think you want your—your wellness here, and you want to do right by your patients.
Thank you, Chelsea. I just have—I have a question for you. Where were you operating?
Oxnard.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Was any probable cause provided to you when you were—
No, it's a sealed search warrant, and I still am not aware of what I'm being charged with.
That's the same situation with Shangri-La. There was no probable cause disclosed?
Very similar, yes. No. My civil rights were also violated. Thank you.
I have no other speakers' cards. Does anyone else want to address us on this?
This will be one minute or less. Ron Karashi. I just wanted to ask you to rethink permit fees and access, and I would cite Article 1, Section—Section 13, and the Fourth Amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll bring it back to council for a motion or further discussion. I just want to add that it's an urgency matter, so it's going to take all four votes to pass. Mayor Pro Tem?
I want to—I want to emphasize that my motivation in bringing this—you know, asking that this be brought forward was not to answer all the questions by any means, but to get—to do what we can now. And I do apologize that— do what we can now. And I do apologize that we didn't move on faster. I feel bad about that, but we're here now. I want to ask Mr. Summers, the way this is written, and I'll make a motion after I understand things a little bit better. There's quite a burden if we pass this where the city manager basically has a burden of developing guidelines quickly and issuing licenses. So a fair amount of discretion there with the city manager?
This is structured...
A lot of interpretations along the lines of I previously was discussing.
Yes. This is structured to give a fair amount of discretion to the city manager for two purposes.
And this would be in place only until we took further action with further ordinances? This is urgency only?
And to be clear, it stands until the council takes further action.
Until it takes further action.
There's no, there's no sunset clause built into this.
I understand that, but it's, it basically, it, it's not intended to preclude or any, it's just meant to address what we have now as an urgency situation.
That's correct. The future councils could take future actions as needed.
And given all of those guidelines that are basically at the discretion of the good judgment of the city manager, is there any issue with simply adding an "and" to the delivery, delivery and dispensing, medical marijuana or medical cannabis and cannabinoid products, rather than, and not, not, a person may deliver cannabis or cannabis, or marijuana or marijuana products, but simply specifying, we're talking about, not in general, we're talking about medical cannabis and medical cannabinoid products, delivery and dispensing? In B, on the top of Attachment A, page 4 or 5.
Yes. I would suggest a few other points if that is the direction to take.
Well, it just, it just struck me that the medical wasn't in there, and that's certainly what the intent is.
Oh, medical is in B, the very last word, the first line.
For medical use. It says for medical use.
Right.
I'm just trying to be very clear. Okay?
I guess I'm not understanding your point.
Go on.
In other words...
I want to make sure that we're, that we're not opening up a door in a back way for recreational.
No, that's clear in the previous sentence.
Right.
Delivery for recreational use is strictly prohibited.
Okay. But in terms of changing the language to cannabis and adding dispensing?
Cannabis is easy. It's a fine and replace. Instead of marijuana, with respect to the dispensaries, that's doable. I would suggest more than just adding the word "may deliver" or "dispense marijuana" or marijuana products. You might add it as, "A person may deliver or dispense from a non-retail, non-storefront dispensary marijuana marijuana products within city for medical use with a license from the city manager." And it would also be important to add something to the effect of, "Any license issued under city manager's authority to permit dispensary, dispensing of medical marijuana is a temporary license that creates no vested right to engage in said activity or business should the council act in the future to remove the authorization for this license."
Okay.
Something to that effect.
I agree with all of that. Next question is, the discretion granted to the city manager in this language. Okay, go ahead, guys. I love these sidebars, don't you?
Yeah, they want to get it right.
Yeah.
I'm happy to make clear what my question was here because what I, what I was taking pause, and I'm sorry to interrupt, was because we've had this issue with the permissive uses within the zones.
Well, this was what I...
That's what I was asking.
My questioning earlier was that would be within the discretion of interpretation under this urgency.
That's what I just want to make sure I was clear on.
The answer, I hope, is yes.
I don't want to answer for the city attorney.
Sorry, question from the Sheriff's Captain. Please repeat that point, that last question there.
That the issue of permissive use zoning would also be subject to the interpretation under the urgency status?
Yes. In evaluating, and that doesn't follow the city manager, that follows the Community Development Director, in evaluating a determination of similar use under the existing zoning code provisions that allow a determination of similar use to be made, I would expect that the Community Development Director would bear in mind the policy judgments made by the council in tonight's action if it is taken.
And that person answers to the city manager?
Yes, but in, in the exercise of that discretion, they do not answer to the city manager.
I understand, but it's also appealable.
It's always appealable to the planning commission and then to the council, not to the city manager.
And the other question is, would the discretion of the city manager include addressing issue of, let's say, just to say that we get multiple applications for licenses, and when there's an issue of density, would that be within the discretion of the city manager to exercise judgment on, on issues of density?
Yes, as it's presently phrased, I would suggest that the council perhaps provide some direction to cabin that discretion. Perhaps no more, no facility within 500 feet of another permitted facility.
Okay.
What is, what's the curtain code for liquor stores? How close can it be to one another?
To one another?
Yeah.
I confess, I do not know that number off the top of my head.
Although I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable comparing a medical facility to...
No, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about distances from one another.
Right. I'm going to, I'm going to start offering a motion here and see if...
I think we need a couple more comments.
Okay.
Okay. I, I do have comments. Just to be clear on this, on this proposition, what this does. It immediately allows for adult, for recreational use, correct? We can, for, for adult use.
State law, as of Tuesday, allows recreational use of marijuana in a private place.
In a private place. That's what. So, and it also, in licensing a medical facility, that could only be done with this local and state permit, right? Or...
That is correct. To be fully compliant with state law, a medical facility must have both a local and a state license.
Okay.
And the state licenses will not be issued until 2018.
So we're talking about dispensary. Would that fall into that category, or is that separate?
As I understand the Mayor Protem's coming motion, it would permit medical dispensaries, non-storefront, non-retail, to have a local license. They would still be required by existing state law to get a state license before they can operate. State licenses aren't going to be issued until 2018, thus they would be operating at that risk in the meantime. And we don't control and cannot control the issues of the state licenses.
Okay. So to be clear. And then in terms of prohibiting cultivation outdoors, in the staff report, have, have we done an analysis about the pros and cons of cultivating outdoor versus indoor?
That question hasn't been analyzed in detail, reflecting the fact that the election was just last Tuesday.
Okay.
In, in brief, the environmental benefits are as advocated tonight with respect to allowing outdoor cultivation, allows cultivation that relies on the sun, does not rely on electricity to provide the lighting source that is necessary for photosynthesis. The con is that it is more visible or can be more visible and can be more accessible, particularly the scent in the harvest times or the nearing harvest times, thus creating more disturbance for neighbors if they are concerned of that sort. And you also get into security issues. Indoor cultivation is hidden cultivation. Outdoor cultivation isn't necessarily hidden cultivation, and there will continue to be a black market for marijuana, even as legalized as there is now for liquor, and you have a greater security threat if there's cultivation that's obvious than you do if it's not obvious, but that's a choice to be made for the council.
Okay. If, if it, if a medical marijuana dispensary requires both a local and a state license, and somebody's operating without the state license, who enforces that? Is it the Sheriff's Department?
It is, can be enforced by the state bureaucracy that isn't yet fully formed, and it could also be enforced by the sheriff and the district attorney as they desire.
And at least from everything that I've seen from the district attorney, they seem to want to do everything they can to keep medical marijuana dispensaries out of, out of operation.
Unfortunately, that does seem to be the position of the district attorney in to add one more comment.
So all we can, all we can do with an action to permit it is to say, "We'll issue a license locally, but if who's ever operating, it doesn't have it," at a state level, they run the risk of being shut down again. So...
At least until the state licenses are issued, and then they need to maintain compliance with those state requirements.
Okay. As far as the outdoor cultivation, with the recreational use, it allows for six plants. With medical, with a medical marijuana card, you can do 99 plants. So, I guess we have to distinguish...
I think commercially it's 99.
No.
That's wrong. That's wrong.
What?
What I, what I understand...
Please come to the microphone.
Come to the microphone.
One concern I have is, through the meetings that I've attended, is I keep hearing that you, you need to have the city licensing first, otherwise the state licensing is like, "What are you even asking for? You don't even have a city permit." So it is, it would settle a lot of people's, you know, minds if you could at least have one city that's like, "Hey, you know what? We'll figure it out, and we support you."
Yeah, I, I understand. What I'm, what I was referring to is whether medical marijuana license, not a license for a dispensary, but just having the, the medical marijuana license that allows you to grow 99 plants.
I believe that requirement is not 99 plants, but is up to 100 square feet of cultivated area, which could be...
That change?
That's the current requirement. Prop 64 allows another way around it without requiring the medical issue. You can just have up to six plants for residents, period. The medic...
The needs of medical patients are also dictated by each individual person. The difference between a medical patient and someone operating under the recreational guidelines are very different. There was a case precedent set in which a patient argued his need was significantly larger than that of other people based on the types of medicine used, and, you know, not everybody is the same, so the needs are going to change also based on each patient. And the, there are certain doctor's offices that will issue these like exemption wrecks, and that's just a way to bilk good, honest people out of more money. I actually worked for a doctor's office who is considered not a great doctor's office. I was a chaperone for the medical board for them, and during my time there, I also raised concerns about, you know, how they were doing things and the language that they were using within their paperwork. It's all about taking care of patients and respecting their needs as individuals.
Right. All I'm referring to is, and I'll get it up here in a minute, having represented probably over 100 individuals that have medical marijuana licenses, I can tell you, most of their licenses say they can grow 99 plants and have six pounds of marijuana. That's all I'm telling you. So if we're going to, if we're going to try to limit outside, outside cultivation, and if we're going to say that they can have, that we either don't want any outside cultivation, or now they say six plants, it's not going to change that regulation, to my knowledge, as to medical marijuana being grown for personal use, and we're going to have to limit that over and above whatever the license that's being given to them by the doctor says. Because I don't think we want to have 100 plants being grown.
And I think the city has the power to limit it further. The doctor may permit 99 for certain medical patients. The city can impose a smaller limit.
Could I ask if Sarah Armstrong has a comment on this? Mayor?
Sure.
The way that the 99-plant letter started rolling around was people trying to evade the law and continue growing sort of as a cottage industry. The people in this room tonight are not interested in growing 99 plants. They understand what a burden that would be on the community. If you want to limit the number of plants that people can have, that's fine. The idea that a patient can possess what they need for their medical needs is a very different concept than an arbitrary number of 99. The reason it was set at 99, federal law kicks in at 100. That's what it came from. I would urge you tonight to think beyond the most marijuana that a patient might need and instead concentrate on what it needs, period. Nobody who has come before you tonight has expressed any interest in growing 99 plants. And frankly, it's a job, so if you're sick, it's really not something you're going to be able to do. Please, if you would, simply tonight, go forward and try and provide some relief for some very sick people. I think everybody in this room would be more than happy with the result. As far as the 99 plants go, that is a commercial enterprise. It requires an enormous amount of money, energy, time. People like the people in this room are not well enough to do that, so that is what I would say. And please, if you need to put some limits on it to make it safe for everybody in the community, do so, but please go forward.
Sarah, I'd like to ask for your specific recommendation. If, short of a, an urgency just for now, prohibition on outdoor, just, you know, more or less just until we figure out how to regulate it, do you have a substitute language that you would suggest with respect to outdoor?
I would say that...
I hate to put you on the spot. I'm looking for help.
I would say that any time an activity of a resident impinges on the rights and safety of another resident, that that is where you draw the line.
Well, the issue there is how to write something into the priority of an urgency ordinance that's simple and clear, because that's the issue, that was kind of the issue with going for a prohibition until we figure out how to regulate. That doesn't answer the question of how, what would be, what would be the alternative of what we can do tonight?
For, are you talking about just outdoor growing?
Yes.
Okay. So the language that you would like for that revolves around the idea that the grow can only exist if it does not injure the health or safety of the residents growing or...
Not clear enough.
Well, all right, let's get specific.
So a specific guideline for an urgency ordinance, that's what we're looking for.
Okay. You allow people to grow a small amount. I believe the, the number is six we're talking about here, and that they must do so in such a way that the smell, nutrients, or setup does not endanger the health and safety of anyone else. So you would have rules that said that all of the nutrients and the fertilizer has to be locked up so that children and pets can't wander into the area. You want it fenced inside the curtilage so it is not visible. You want a situation where people who are growing outdoors do not alert thieves by failing to control the grow, and you most specifically want a situation where people are not allowed to simply run wild. They have to obey these laws. They have to obey these mandates, and if they don't care to do that, this is a privilege, not a right, and it will be immediately taken away from them.
Thank you.
Is that it?
So, Mayor, I, you know, I was sitting here thinking about the 99, and I, I remember that old saying, what, 99 beers on the wall? Take one down, pass it around, and obviously someone just put 99 joints on the wall and take one down. And so I, you know, I want to be, I want to clear, I want to clarify my perspective on this so that, so that you know where I'm at. I, when I first heard about this, the medical side of it, the first thing I did is I Googled it. And then I printed about 100 sheets of paper on medical marijuana. So I believe it. I believe it works. I believe in the testimony that was given tonight. I want to be clear on what we're trying to achieve here in this, through this emergency ordinance, is we are, we are trying to allow a dispensary in our community and allow the distribution of medical marijuana to its citizens. That's what this ordinance is about, and it's an emergency, and we need to act on it, and I believe that we're going to do that tonight. The other thing that it also implies is that we can come back to this after having more discussions with this community. The advocates are in the room. I understand that. There's 7,500 people in our community. We need to hear all of you. So we can do something tonight on a short-term fix that's going to allow us to do what we know is best right now for our community. Regarding recreational use of drugs or the recreational use of the, of marijuana... Regarding recreational use of drugs or the recreational use of the marijuana and all of these other things, we can, we can talk later on and we can, I think we can figure out what to do with. But I think tonight, what's before us is something that's doable, is something that we can pass. So with that, William, I'm willing to let you make a motion if we're through discussion.
And I'm being hand signaled by the city attorney, so I'm really ready to go after he, yeah.
I was going to suggest a couple of points to, more language to accomplish, I think, the goal that may be in.
Please.
Your motion. With respect to this dispensary angle, I suggest adding a, adding several sentences. Bear with me while I read them. To subdivision B on page three of eight that would have the overall goal of accomplishing a non-retail, non-storefront medical marijuana dispensary license from the city.
Please read slowly.
Yes. A person may operate, and this is to be added to the end of the existing section B. A person may operate a medical marijuana, non-retail, non-storefront dispensary if the person obtains a license from the city for such facility. The city manager or his, or her designee shall issue applications and processing guidelines for the city medical marijuana business license. No such license shall be issued prior to release of these guidelines, and no license shall be granted that is not fully complied with the application and processing requirements. The business in question may only operate as a medical marijuana delivery service. Any fixed location the business maintains within the city's limits must be solely to facilitate such delivery. This is what builds in the banning of the retail. Other uses of any fixed location within the city's limits are prohibited, including but not limited to using a fixed location as a retail storefront. The business in question may not engage in any commercial activities related to recreational marijuana within the city's limits. This is intended as a temporary measure, notwithstanding any other provision of the Ohio municipal code, to ensure the city's residents have safe and reliable access to medical marijuana while the city council considers a more permanent marijuana policy. This section creates no vested right to engage in any activity, such activity or business.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Of course.
Does that language allow people to pick up their medicine at the dispensary?
That language does not. This is only for delivery. That can be accomplished if desired. The way to do that would be to.
It doesn't have to be retail for them to be able to pick up their medicine at the dispensary?
Allowing pickup by prior appointment only would accomplish that goal. To me, retail means walk-in, no appointment necessary.
Exactly.
Appointment only. So the way to do that would be to revise the middle section. The business question may operate, must operate as a medical marijuana delivery or appointment-only service.
Right.
And then delete the reference to retail storefront.
Right. Okay. I like that.
I, I have a question about.
Again, this is urgency tonight.
About cultivation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was just on the dispenser angle.
No, I got that, yeah.
In terms of cultivation, staff had recommended to possibly look at regulating indoor. I would be for staff looking at how to regulate it outdoor. And because I think that it, it could, it could be more valuable to have an option to cultivate outdoors and indoor. And we haven't analyzed that fully unless we want to add language that was provided on, on the podium about cultivating outside.
I'm gonna, my motion will not include that for this reason. We have higher priorities tonight. That's going to take some staff study. It's going to take some more thought, more that we have time for tonight. I think, I think coming up with the, I'm, I'm kind of reverting back to the idea that it's better to establish a baseline and then figure out how to regulate it than try to figure out how to regulate it tonight.
My, my understanding is that regardless, indoor cultivation is not prohibited. So if we're, so that if, if people are.
It's my right.
It's by right. If, if, if people are cultivating indoor right now, if that creates more of a safety hazard than having them cultivate outside, why wouldn't we allow them to do it outside when it makes more sense that it's more, it's safer outside? That's just my thought process because by right, they're able to cultivate indoors already. It's, we, and we don't have any regulations to control that type of cultivation. So why not allow with certain, a baseline language of how to cultivate outside and, and.
I haven't heard any simple language yet.
Well, I, I think that.
For doing that on an urgency basis.
And, and I would be, I think that the language provided by, I forget your name, ma'am.
I'm Sarah Armstrong.
Sarah Armstrong. To me, it's Ms. Armstrong's language does provide the, the type of baseline.
Here's my, here's my concern. My concern is getting medical availability as much as possible. I want staff to concentrate on that, frankly. To set up a regime for regulating outdoor right now takes away from that focus. And it's a matter of priorities of time. And that's why I think it's, the, the, the approach should be until, you know, we're going to figure out how to allow outdoor cultivation. We're going to do that, okay? But in the meantime, I want staff to focus on getting people their medicine and not figuring out how to regulate outdoor cultivation.
And, and I think to a certain degree, we have already done that right, right now.
Well, no, there's, if we pass this tonight, the city manager's got a lot of work to do.
And we were just discussing that point in a sidebar. We expect it will take about 30 to 45 days to put those regulations and application forms together.
And in the meantime, we can come back and talk about how we're going to regulate outdoor. And that's, that's my point. It's a matter of priorities here.
And, and, and I under, I understand that. I mean, in terms of getting people their medical doses for, for reasons. But in my, it just has somebody, I, I just, for me, it would be easy to put regulations to cultivate outside. And that's my point of view. Wouldn't disagree on you on that because I think that we're actually allowing people to do it in a safer method than doing it indoor because by right, they could do it indoor anyways. So it's, to me, it's not that difficult. But I mean, the main point is, is allowing people to get it medically, so.
Right. Well, I think that, I think that where the confusion's coming up with the cultivation outdoors or indoors or whatever is we're mixing apples and oranges here.
Exactly.
In one aspect, we're talking about the medical marijuana, which we're all consistent that that's something essential to our community. But then we've got this other Prop 64 that we have to worry about because that is totally unregulated at this point. It, it, you could grow six plants anywhere you want. We're not talking about the six plants that you can grow recreationally. When I was asking the questions about what could be grown, because somebody that has a marijuana license can grow 99 plants. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna regulate outdoors, which we do not permit at all right now, then.
One point to note, with Prop 64, unless the city acts to prohibit it, outdoor cultivation is permitted as of Tuesday.
So we have to say that we have to, we can't allow it outside. Because I would imagine if we allow it outside for Prop 64, wouldn't we have to allow it outside for, or can we regulate the number of plants? See, that's the problem I'm having because what I'm hearing from the people that need the, the medical aspect of the marijuana, they're not really all that interested in growing it outside.
Right.
It's the people that want to use it recreationally that want to grow it outside.
Well, again, and again, I think, again, I think you're exactly right on apples and oranges here. There is no, you know, my, where I was wanting to go with the motion was simply to establish a baseline, not, while we work out additional details of things like how to allow outdoor. We're not talking about a long period of time. We're not going to take months and months and months. We're going to focus on what we can do and what's important and, and most important, which is getting people their medicine. And what we don't want to do is to take away from the legitimate priority and the absolute importance of that by having to, you know, in the same time, we're trying to be a leader in this county in terms of, of providing medicines for people, having a problem with outdoor cultivation, an unintended consequence that we didn't think through. That takes away from the priority of what I think we should be doing. So I, I want, I want the staff to focus on, on the importance while we work out more details. That's all I'm asking to do.
Well, I'd say make the motion. I, right now, people with a medical marijuana card can grow, you know, as many as the card allows indoors.
Being silent on that.
By doing this, we're saying the recreational users that by law are permitted to grow six plants outdoors are not going to be permitted to do that.
I have a question for staff, just for clarification. If the city was to allow dispensers, would it guarantee these dispensaries from being prosecuted in federal?
No.
No, federal law is entirely independent, just to make that point very clear.
What we're doing is what we can.
Yeah.
Right? We're legitimizing with the authority we have as a sovereign city with what we can do. There are all kinds of guidelines at the federal level about respecting medical rights of, of states that have medical marijuana rights. There are guidelines in the state of California about that. Again, you know, we can't solve the problems beyond our authority.
And, and I guess.
What we can do is within our authority.
And I, I understand that logic. I definitely understand that logic. My thing is that if, if we have people that grow their marijuana medically, personally, and we don't allow them to grow it outdoors when it's more beneficial, it makes more sense to grow it, cultivate it outdoors, which they would probably have a more peace of mind to do it that way, then I'm, I'm trying to think about what, what, how to benefit that part of the, of, of the users, of people that, that use.
We need to work those rules out, yes.
That's the long, that's the long-term discussion.
Yeah. We'll work those out.
Technically, they could do it by right indoor, but I was just thinking.
No, not technically, they can't right now.
They can.
And also to be clear, as of last Tuesday, all people have the right to grow up to six plants per residence indoors or outdoors unless the city acts to regulate indoor cultivation.
I understand.
Prohibit outdoor cultivation, medical or recreational, either way.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and make motion and we can see where it goes. Okay? And I, I think I made myself pretty clear, you know, of what, of the, my reasoning here. First of all, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the urgency motion with some, a couple modifications. One is that we substitute the word, that we substitute the word cannabis for marijuana, find and replace. And when we're talking about medical marijuana, medical preparations, we use the word cannabinoid preparations. I think that's more technically accurate. We include the language that's suggested by the city attorney to allow dispensing and by appointment. And that we leave alone the, the prohibition for the time being until we figure it out on outdoor prohibition and leave alone the other language because I think what's important is to focus on staff in this city showing its leadership and enabling people to get their medicine.
And by leave alone, you mean leave and place the language on the draft ordinance in the packet.
Yes.
Thus prohibiting outdoor cultivation.
Yes, for the time being. That's my motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'm gonna second it, okay? Any further discussion?
No, I do have a question. In, in terms of, to the city attorney, Mr. Summers, can we make another motion in terms of giving a timeframe of when we, we want possibly staff to come up with regulations for indoor and outdoor marijuana cultivation?
Yes. That could be either part of the same motion or separate.
I'll do.
I'll, I'll take a friendly amendment. You want a time certain for a report back?
I, I think and I'll ask staff for that. I, I don't know if.
So are we talking about the time to develop the?
Outdoor. Outdoor cultivation suggestions.
Oh, outdoor cultivation, oh, okay. And I would suggest also indoor cultivation.
Yes, indoor and outdoor.
Why don't we say March 1st, February 1st?
I'd go for March 1st.
March 1st for a time certain, report back from staff on, on indoor and outdoor cultivation regulations.
Okay, that's good.
Or by the first.
Second the amendment?
Or by the first meeting, first regular meeting in March.
Regular meeting in March.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, ma'am, the, the discussion's closed. Well, okay.
And I, the last point to bear in mind before you vote, as the city manager and I noted before, we expected the guidelines and application requirements and so forth for issuance of the new medical marijuana delivery and dispensary licenses would be available within.
I would say by January 1st.
By January 1st.
Okay. Second? All right, any further discussion?
Let's wrap it up.
All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes.
Thank you. Proud to be in this city. Thank you very much, everyone.
All right. We still have a meeting to conduct, okay?
And just to note, because this is a special meeting, the 10:30 rule does not apply.
Yes, I understand.
Nice try, Amber.
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
I've got to go to the bathroom.
Well, the only item is.
All right, we're taking a break. Can I-
Time's on your side.
Yeah.
Yeah.[370.72]
However, currently, that is state law. If you are digging anywhere or doing anything and you come across human remains or suspected human remains, as I understand it, the law requires you to stop that activity immediately and report it to the appropriate authority, and I believe in this county it would be to the coroner, so that they can come out and do the appropriate investigation before you continue. The other policy point that the committee weighed in on is whether this should be adopted by ordinance or resolution. The committee recommended such a policy be adopted by ordinance. If adopted by ordinance as a text amendment to the zoning code, would need review by the planning commission, required public hearings. However, it would be stronger because it requires all to follow the policy. And the only way to vary from that would be to secure a variance. Of course, going the ordinance route requires additional steps before council can make that adoption. If it's approved simply by resolution, it's not as strong because the council may make that change at any time if it's on agenda at some meeting. So, but again, if it's adopted by resolution, it is something that we would be able to enforce through conditions of approval. However, it would just not simply be as strong if in the ordinance. Our recommendation would be that the council consider adopting by resolution standard conditions of approval for all discretionary projects pending the council's further consideration of cultural resources issues in full. We have attached to the staff report, Attachment A, which is the working document that was produced by the committee. The actual proposed policy points may be found listed under procedures, beginning on page one of the document. So staff is seeking direction from council on whether to develop a policy for adoption by city council and the specifics as to what the policy should contain. And lastly, as an alternate recommendation, council may wish to wait to hear the full recommendation from the cultural resources committee before considering this policy.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the public, the reason that it's, we took this item up after 10:30 is because we're operating under a special meeting, so we can continue to go.
Mayor Blatz, you have a question? Because we don't have the benefit of having our city attorney there at the ad hoc committee meetings. What's your take on having any type of police powers under your general plan to enforce a type of accidental discovery policy for non-permitted earth disturbing activity?
As you understand the question, it's, does the city have the power to impose this policy on earth disturbing activities that are not presently permitted by the city? The answer is yes, under your police power, but it gets to enforceability. You can impose a requirement on any time anyone has a shovel in the ground, but the only shovels in the ground that the city is made aware of are when someone seeks a permit to do a building permit, a grading permit, a designer view permit, et cetera. If you impose the policy as to all earth disturbing activities, not permitted earth disturbing activities, you have the power to adopt the policy, and it is legal if adopted by the council through the proper process, but it's an enforceability question. City, how can you enforce that policy every time there's a shovel in the ground when residents are not required to inform the city of all shovels in the ground lest you adopt a policy, that would have to be an ordinance, you adopt an ordinance requiring a permit from the city to do anything on the ground? That is also within your power. I would not recommend doing that because it would likely face immediate challenges and unreasonable exercise of your power to require a city permit for all instances of earth disturbing activities.
No, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying, would this policy be legal in terms of if somebody was to call and say they discover some cultural resource? And is there a procedure? If there's already a policy in place for accidental discovery, could the city then follow, could make a resident then follow these procedures?
If you adopted it to apply to all earth disturbing activity, yes.
Even if they don't have a permit?
If you ordered it to do so, yes, but it does get to a significant enforceability problem.
Okay. I just.
Any other questions? All right. I have some speakers' cards. The first card is John Foster.
Thank you, council and staff. My name is John Foster. I'm senior archaeologist for Greenwood Associates, and I'm here today to discuss the pending provisions in front of you. Most of the city of Ojai has not been archeologically surveyed. The unanticipated discoveries provision is meant to try to anticipate a process whereby if archaeological resources are encountered, there is a process by which the city can protect those resources. The general plan outlines that these sites are considered to be an important part of the history of Ojai and that they merit that protection, which is what the provisions within, the programs within the general plan set out. So, the information that is within these archaeological sites includes scientific information, cultural values as expressed by the Native Americans, as well as a host of ancillary studies that our types of information that we can get from archaeological deposits could help, like biologists can review types of creatures that are no longer, that are currently extinct, but by which our information can provide them that kinds of information. So what we're trying to do is find a process by where the city has the ability to protect these sites in the event that they are found. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Don Teating. Just a few comments on the proposal before you. At the May 31 council meeting, special meeting that we had on cultural resources, we heard that we needed to know what are the procedures for if you hit something? And that's what's before you tonight, is what happens if you hit something? The procedures are standard archaeological procedures. Most Phase One archaeological reports recommend, most of the archaeologists recommend stop if you hit something, and most cities and counties have procedures in place by ordinance to stop if you hit something. So this is a basic provision to protect resources for unanticipated discovery. It's brought before you today in advance of other considerations because it's important. We've identified it as a priority because right now the city is not enforcing protections for cultural resources for anything other than discretionary permits. So we still have a situation right now where even for a ministerial activity, if resources are identified, and we've had this happen now twice, known resources identified in a Phase One report, reports that have done previously, and no action was taken to prevent further impact to a site. At that point, we lose the artifacts, we potentially lose a site, we don't know because we don't know what those artifacts mean. And so, we'd strongly recommend that that action be taken, you know, we're trying to look at these in terms of priorities, that action be taken to prevent impacts at this point so that the city can do something about it. Very concerned right now if we continue to wait. I know we are looking forward to giving you a full package for your consideration, but this is an important matter before you. In terms of the enforceability between permitted activity and unpermitted activity, my recommendation, and what we've talked about, is that it's a requirement on city permitted activities to stop if you hit something. That can be achieved in discretionary through a condition of approval, and also in ministerial activities as part of the permitting process to ensure general plan consistency. In terms of non-permitted city activities, the suggestion would be that the wording goes in, that the homeowner, it's recommended that they stop if they hit something. Again, this, by having that wording in there, that it's the homeowner's responsibility, it protects the resource and lets them know what to do. We've heard, why are we only protecting cultural resources for city permitted activities and not gardening and not planting a tree? Well, we want to protect resources in those cases. And this type of policy would give you the ability to say that these resources are important, these resources are nonrenewable, and we value these resources. So we'd appreciate your consideration of this and whatever you can do in terms of moving this forward at this time.
Thank you, Dawn.
One other comment, quickly. We had discussion last night, last night was our scheduled last ad hoc meeting, and we need some time to consider the public input. We've had nine meetings where we've taken public input. Our sunset date from you has been set, but we'd liked a little bit more time to put together a comprehensive report. We've got some scheduling conflicts over the next month or so, and so we would appreciate any extra time that the council may be able to give us.
Thank you. Peggy LaSara?
My comments have already been made.
Dawn has pretty much spelled out everything that we have been going through for this length of time. It's been very interesting, the process in which we've taken this ad hoc committee through, and there still seems to be a lot of lack of understanding, and pretty much I'm surprised at. The general public has really not weighed in, especially tonight. We've had them in our ad hoc committee meeting for nine meetings, as Dawn mentioned. So, and outside of that, I don't know what you receive in the city. I don't know what kind of emails or calls, we're not privy to that. I haven't been hearing much from the general public as I go about. But, you know, this is something that we take very seriously, and where, you know, our general plan spells it out, we can wordsmith that thing to death, and it still comes down to the comments and the lines in there that we shall protect native villages, or however that language was, known, unknown, and yet to be discovered. And you can't do that unless you know where they are, so that you can avoid them and protect them. We are still in the phase of trying to understand where we're going to get past this ministerial non-permitted process when it doesn't appear in our general plan and discretionary. So as you can build a house without any conditions, we need this ordinance, we need this language in place. And where some people are on the honor system, when they find something, they call us, or they'll call you, or, you know, it has happened in the past, and I think people are concerned about what's on their property and what they do. And so I just, you know, again, don't want to go into what Dawn has already spoken of, but we have worked very, very hard on this. And I'm afraid that if you give us, if we don't get the extension, you'll get half a packet of what we can get to you. And like I said earlier in my earlier comments, we want to bring everything that we've discussed, everything that we have laid out, all the research, the hours of time we've all invested, and including our council members there too, and the work that's been given to us, that we want to give you a complete, just packet, just something that you can look at, you can spend time with. And I'm afraid we won't be able to do that in the time that you've given us. We haven't been playing there, as they can probably testify to that. We've been doing a lot of discussion, a lot of research, and we want to present that to you in its full entirety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I don't see Craig Beam.
No, he has to go.
And Pat Tumimite?
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just, I would just like to have you guys examine and experience this whole situation through our eyes, our history, our ancestry, that means a lot to us as people that, you know, were indigenous to this area. And the fact of the matter that we're not going to be here on earth for much longer, but the history is going to be here, the people, the ancestry is still going to be here, and we need to leave that legacy for other people to follow through. I mean, this is our land, this is our territory. You may have come from Europe somewhere, but this is our territory, and it's meaningful, it's meaningful to this country, you know, and the people of the United States, and the people of this town, the people of this area. And yes, we have some, you know, people that are native, that are my nieces and nephews and so on, that may carry on this legacy and this tradition of life and the culture and the spirit of who we are, who we were at the time. And I need for you guys, as leaders of this community, to focus in and see what we see, to know what we know, and to feel what we feel about carrying on this history. And it's prehistory. You know, we're dealing with thousands of years of history here, and there's nothing else like it elsewhere. So, my concern is tonight is that you guys try to see what we feel on how and what it takes to preserve this culture, preserve these people, and leave it as something you can feel and touch and understand and learn about. We've tried to educate you guys for the past two years. We've learned an awful lot about politics in the past two years and what it takes to get something implemented, to protect something that should be part of this city and part of this territory, you know, and it's up to you guys to see that it's done. You know, we can have input and recommendations and this and that, but when it comes to law, it's your guys' integrity that determines what happens here tonight and how it's going to be protected. So I ask of you guys to consider all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I don't have any other speakers' cards.
Hi there. I know it's late. My name's Alastair Coyne, longtime Ojai resident. I'd just like to speak out in support of the council's requesting staff to prepare an ordinance to protect unanticipated discovery of cultural resources. It's important to do that. I also want to just thank all the members of the ad hoc committee that's just wrapped up its work, and second the request for a little bit more time to get a final report done. I know that we've taken a long time to get to where we are. The council requested in the summer that the ad hoc committee be open to members of the public. Several members of the local construction trades have been present at our meetings, have given a lot of good input to us, and that has certainly slowed things down a bit to bring a bunch of new people up to speed, but I'm glad that we finished our work, and I think you'll be getting a very solid and useful report very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Alastair. Anyone else? All right, I'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment before the council deliberates. Unfortunately, although I understand the issue and the urgent, the need to consider it, the agenda item before you tonight allows you to consider and discuss a policy on unanticipated discovery of resources and direct staff to do so. I do not read that agenda item encompassing also extending the deadline for the ad hoc committee to do its work, but given the desire to consider that, if desired, that could be added to the agenda for the 29th, which is before the deadline runs, and would provide an opportunity for the council to extend that deadline if they so desire.
Okay. Any questions of the council? Discussion, motion? What do you want to do? I'd like to turn to the two members of the ad hoc committee and ask them what their thoughts are.
I just want to thank, obviously, everybody that's been working on this. It's a very complex issue in terms of how to implement our general plan and what policies we should adopt in protecting cultural resources. So I've learned quite a bit about this issue. And talking about this accidental discovery of cultural resources, I look at it, I know there's a, there's a couple of issues here. I know that looking at this policy, the enforceability, especially enforceability for non-permitted or disturbing activities. And I know there is some discussion on the ad hoc committee level that whether to apply it to all or just some, and there were some disagreement to that. I think at the end of the day, the council has to make that decision. And I think Councilmember Haney has clearly stated that over and over at the ad hoc committee, that whether it applies this just to permitted, earth disturbing, or to all, that should be council's call. But at the same time, looking at our conservation element, as an ad hoc committee, we've been trying to interpret the language in there. And just to read you some general language about how to apply the general policy under, I'm reading right now, Ojai general plan, on page four, it just states that any planning for the future of the Ojai, of the Ojai, it shall be the overall goal of the city to provide for the preservation and the proper utilization of natural and cultural resources to maintain and enhance the quality of the natural living environment and natural beauty of the area. So this applies to all the different elements on the general plan. And I think also furthermore, looking at the policy under cultural resources, it states on the very beginning, it shall be the overall goal of the city to provide the long-term preservation or proper scientific investigation to all known and potential cultural resources within the Ojai area of interest. So I guess what I'm trying to say with bringing that up is, we're still working on the initial investigation, but we do need a structure and a policy, whether that be through an ordinance or a resolution, to protect cultural resources. And I think that our guiding principle has been the general plan, and I think that's why the ad hoc committee has recommended what the staff report reflects, because I think it's consistent to our general plan, it's within our police power, but there is an enforceability component to this, and I think we're all aware of that. But this is the council, this is my take on why it's come in this form. I mean, there's, if we go through the whole process during the whole two years, we've just been going back and forth, but I think that's kind of my overall thought process, what I would like to share with the council. I don't know.
Councilman Haney?
Well, I'll be shorter. I just, I think in the ad hoc committee, there's a complete agreement as to that we want to protect cultural resources. I don't think that's in question. I think it's how we go about writing this ordinance or creating this ordinance is what has concerned me. We did the PAW first, and the PAW had a lot of unintended consequences. It had a lot of negative interpretations, poor interpretations, and it took, I don't know, over a year or so just to get it ironed out where staff actually understood how to implement it. And even to this day, there's parts of the PAW that are misunderstood out in the public arena. So that's one part of this, one part of my argument not to move forward on this tonight is the fact that it's a piecemeal process. And I would like to see all of this information brought together at one time, completed, and then discussed in content versus, well, we did this over here and we did this over here, okay, and now we're going to do this, this, and this, and how do these two apply to this, this, and this? I think it's going to be easier to see it all, read it all, understand it all, and actually put it together as one package if we do it, as one complete process as we close. Now, having said that, I'm also in agreement with the other part of the ad hoc committee as far as extending the date, and I am in agreement that we do that, we bring it back to council on the 29th, and that we do discuss that, because there is some compelling reasons to gather all the information, put it in its proper order, and then be able to disseminate that to, not only to us three, but also to the other two, to the new council members. So it's important that they get to participate in what we're trying to achieve and that they get all the information that's available at one time. And that's where I lie on this, is I just would like to see it all come together at one time versus in this manner.
Okay. Mayor Blatz, anything?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. That's all right. I was actually surprised to see this on the agenda, to be honest, because I was looking forward to getting reports in that, and then getting it on the, I mean, the whole idea, I thought, was to get reports in, whether or not, you know, there may be a, you know, different reports coming out of this group, but an ad hoc committee after a year and a half, the idea is to get where you're at, report so that the new council, we have two new councils, we knew we were going to have at least one new council person, and we're going to have two. And that new council then has a mechanism, has a ability to comprehend and move forward on this, and to focus on this. I understand, and I defer to the members of the ad hoc committee if they want to take up the 29th for more time, but again, that time was, I thought, chosen to specifically have something ready to go right away for the newly constituted councils to go ahead and act as soon as possible. So, you know, I don't like ad hoc committees that last this long. It's not, I don't think it's a good governing practice. It became, it's become a standing committee when it was set up and structured as an ad hoc committee. And that's a problem, you know? Generally, ad hoc committees are not supposed to last more than a few months. And so I think we've learned a lesson that maybe this issue was too complicated and too involved to approach as an ad hoc committee. They may have learned that lesson, you know? I'm very concerned about approaching something this sensitive with the history that we've had in a piecemeal fashion. I'm open to considering more time to pull it together. Not in any way doubting the importance of this, but I think that we have got to keep the pressure on pulling, getting these reports, getting it open for the new council to consider, focus on it, take action, and not in a piecemeal fashion. And so I'm just going to express my desire, after looking at all of this, that we, the very last thing about, you know, we just don't take it up piecemeal, and we take it up on a, whenever we, as soon as we can. In fact, I'd be open to putting in a date certain to bringing this up in a complete fashion as soon as possible with the new council in the new year. But that's my feeling.
Just to answer some of those comments, I just, if I may, Mayor Blatz, I agree, it's not good governance to have this long of an ad hoc committee, and I think that it probably was a little bit too complex, but at the same time, I've learned through this ad hoc committee that this is not an easy item for any, and not even, and I feel with the complexity of this issue, to be frank, any approach would have been very difficult, I think. And I think that we brought, and to be fair to ad hoc committee, we brought up a lot of options in the past that have not been supported, or we've been redirected, so our ability to really finalize and come up with the final product has been very difficult. So we've tried our best to really work forward, and we've tried to bring whole concepts together, and that didn't work, so we're, unfortunately, we tried to do it through pieces to get something on the book to really protect cultural resources. And this policy that we brought in front of you, it is for accidental discovery of cultural resources. I understand that you would like to see the big picture, but we thought that at least having a policy in place to direct not only the public, but staff, know how to evaluate cultural resources when they're accidentally discovered was important enough because it is in the general plan, and according to this ad hoc committee, our assessment is that we haven't been doing our, to our best ability, to protect. um, our, to our best ability to protect those cultural resources. So that's why we brought it up, um, right now at this fashion. And, and, and it was supposed to be brought up a lot quicker. But unfortunately with us running late through meetings and it compounded with pushing issues, that's why it comes now. Uh, but, uh, I, if, if the majority of the council wishes to put this as a whole packet, I could understand that, but I think that if anything, we should maybe apply this, uh, policy to discretionary permits at the very least, have this condition put just on there. But, I mean, that's, that, that would take the, the motion of the majority of the council, um, to approve.
Matt, I've got a, a question for you. The whole intent of, of putting the sunset on the ad hoc committee was so that immediately upon having a new council, we could really look at this as a whole package. That was the reason for it.
That was how I understood it, both to allow the count, the full new council to consider all of the issues that the ad hoc committee would be able to put on that, on the council's desk. And also to consider the overall question of should an ad hoc committee continue to be the way to go? Should the council just consider the issues itself? Should it, uh, if it so chooses, create a new ad hoc committee? Should it designate staff to look at the issues and bring back something back to the council? It was intended, as I understood it, to be both a substantive review of whatever proposals are put forward by the ad hoc committee or by factions of the ad hoc committee, and a procedural review of is this how the then council wishes to analyze these issues and wishes to move forward on considering these questions? That's what I understood the goal of the deadline was.
And I, I totally agree with you. The difference is though that now something's come up which the ad hoc committee has said is an important thing that they would like us to act on first. So I'm not looking at the big picture here. I'm just looking at this one little segment. And my question is, if the, if the council were to take action consistent with this request tonight, how difficult is it, would it be to then revisit it or unwind it if that's what the wishes of the new council were? Because I think in looking at, at this part, this is just the part of a, a whole. But it's an important part. And when we, when we, when we approve the legislation, we want to approve the whole thing. So we're really only putting something into effect here that may only need to be, we're only, we're protecting ourselves for a couple of months. Because by that time, the whole thing should come back to us. So I guess my question is, and I don't know whether there's support in the council or not, but...
I think there's two points to make there, if I could jump right in. One is to be very clear, what's before you tonight is a request from the ad hoc committee to direct staff to draft a policy for adoption. Nothing is slated for adoption tonight because we haven't been given direction to draft it. So by definition, it will come back to you. Bearing in mind that there's only two days between now and the deadline for the next council packet, unless you explicitly demand it and we put everything else down, including what you just adopted for medical marijuana, that cannot come back on the 29th. So by default, this drafted policy is going to come back on the 13th, if not later, um, which is the next meeting that's reasonably doable. So that, that delay is built in. To answer the second question or the second point, because it would be a direction from this, the current council to staff to draft a policy for adoption, the future council could adopt or not, or modify or not. And even if they adopted it then, or if you directed us to put everything else down and draft something for the 29th, the next council could immediately undo it. It's adopted, if it's adopted by resolution, it can be undone by resolution. If it's adopted by ordinance, it can be undone by ordinance. The only thing that, and you have to follow formalities each time. In terms of however it was adopted, you have to follow those formalities to unadopt it. But nothing, in no way can this council tie the hands of a future council.
Right. Okay. So if we were to, if we were to adopt this tonight, and it's probably not going to come back to us until sometime in January.
I mean, it wouldn't be adopt tonight, it would be direct staff to draft.
No, direct staff to draft it.
We could feasibly come back at December 13th.
Yeah, we could get it back by December 13th. We couldn't get it back by the 29th.
Then that council could say, uh, we're not ready to act on this. We want to see the whole picture.
Yes.
Correct? Or, uh, we don't want to act on it at all, or they'll act on it.
Yes, that would be their choices. And they could also modify it, act on it, modify it, or not, or, um, say, you know what? Let's wait and see this full, altogether.
Okay. All right.
Well, I, excuse me, I'm sorry. I, I, I just feel this is committing another procedural mistake in the sense that we want reports from, we set this up a year and a half ago or more for the ad hoc committee to study things, send, get a report back to us about, and then proceed. We're talking here about before we get a report, taking action on one part of the situation just before the report's due. I don't like the procedure. The most that I would be willing to agree to would maybe, uh, be develop the, uh, the language for resolution and discretionary. Uh, I'm, I'm a little nervous about that, uh, given the fact that this has taken a lot of staff time and a lot of back and forth to, before we, we get to what we, what is the proper order for how these things should be done. And that is, in my opinion, personal opinion. You, you assign a group, you assign a task to a committee, you get a report back from a committee, and then you decide what to do with that report. Very simple. And, um, so I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this process this way. And, um, so I'm, I'm not going to make a motion. I don't, I think that should come from members of the ad hoc committee, but I'm just expressing my concern.
Well, there's two, just one more comment. I think there may be a consensus to have this come back at the next meeting to see whether we want to extend the period of time to allow for the report. I believe that's it. That's going to have to be a separate motion, I suppose. So the other option would be just to put this over until then and then have it continued along with everything else. Or just not do anything with it and have it come back with the whole report. It just seems as though it's an important aspect of what we're trying to protect. And you know, the problem is, I really do think that because the whole thing is coming to us, that, that we really need to have the input of the two new council members. Particularly, we only have four here tonight anyway.
Right.
Um, and the whole report's got to be looked at as a whole. And I'm, I'm kinda in a, I, I don't see a problem with moving forward with it tonight. I really don't. But then when you step back and think about it, what are we really gaining by moving on it tonight? Because it could be undone at a later time. And I just have a feeling that the council's going to want to look at it as a whole package.
Well, could I, could I ask staff if it would be difficult to develop a language to possibility, to possibly apply this as in the resolution form to discretionary permits? Would it take a lot of staff time to do?
I don't think that would be overly difficult to put together.
Would you want that by the 29th?
Well, that would be...
That, in other words...
No, I, I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't because that's the two days it would be the report. My, my whole thing is, if it's not going to take too much staff time, if we at least do that, it'll present already potentially some work. We don't know what other councils are going to do. So we're just assuming right now. Um, right now, this council, if, if, if it so desires to direct staff to do something, it means that it's setting some type of importance to this issue. So that would be my take on it. If it's not going to take staff to develop the language to apply it, what, what could, I mean, the other council could say, oh, let's just either say no to it or apply it to all, um, develop, all accidental. So I, if it's not going to take too much time, then why not just develop it?
Well, let's, uh...
And I could, I could do a motion right now. I'll propose a motion to, um, direct staff to prepare, uh, language for resolution, uh, for accidental discovery of cultural resources to apply to discretionary permits. And should I do the consequential motion right now or, um, wait?
Might see if you have a second for that motion.
Okay, great.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes.
And I will move to, um, consider extending, uh, the sunset date for the...
It'll be on the agenda.
That's not a motion to extend it, that's a request to be placed on the next agenda.
A request to put, right, a request to put on the next agenda to extend, to possibly extend, um...
Yeah, we could bring that back on the, well, we would need to bring it back on the 29th, yeah.
It doesn't take a motion, that just takes a, a request. That staff is so directed, we'll, we'll prepare an item on the extension for the 29th of November.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around, it's late.
We're not quite done, but we're almost done.
All right. Any reports from the city manager?
Um, yes. Realize it's late.
There's some important things to get out.
I do have, uh, well, which, yeah, I do have a report. I want to give a report on what we're doing with the short-term rentals. Unfortunately, it's late, but, uh...
I appreciate that. There's been multiple requests to, from the public that I've heard for this information.
So to date, we have investigated, uh, and this is through November 10th. We have investigated 62 cases involving short-term rentals. We currently have 11 active cases. Active cases would include those that still have pending hearings or have signed or considering signing compliance agreements. We have nine cases that we, um, are considered to be on the watch list. Um, not been able to determine that a, a violation has occurred, but we are watching them to make sure that they are, um, meeting the city's rules and regulations on advertising the short-term rentals. And then we have 42 cases which are considered, uh, to be in compliance or to be considered closed. As of today, we have collected a total of, uh, $10,500 in fines. We also received, um, five filed appeals. Of those, two subsequently signed compliance agreements. So those have been moved to the closed cases, um, or, excuse me, um, active cases, actually. The, the active cases is including those that have signed compliance agreements because they're still being monitored. So two have signed a compliance agreement. Um, one is still in the process of, uh, considering signing a compliance agreement. And two have been, uh, two have requested hearings and those are yet, uh, to be scheduled, but they anticipate, I think the first one probably coming up.
We're expecting the first hearings will be in the first week of December, probably December 1st. But that's pending final confirmation of hearing officer and all the various moving pieces.
Thank you. Um, I also want to present a list, and this is, uh, this is public record, but we have scrubbed off the addresses, um, but this is the list of the cases. Um, they have the street name listed, um, the description of the complaint, the date it was received, and the status on that case. I have to say, um, and I don't rarely say this, uh, because I tend to be, I try to be realistic, almost to the point of pessimistic about things. Um, but I really think that the city has made, uh, has been rather successful in this effort. I know we still hear anecdotally that people are seeing short-term rentals advertised or that they believe that they are still occurring. We are not finding that they, that there are large numbers still being advertised in the city. We find that most of the ones that pop up that are still being advertised, and again, there are still ones that come up from time to time and we jump on those. But a lot of the ones that people are still seeing advertised for Ojai are actually not within the city limits. And of course, we don't have any, uh, jurisdiction, uh, or, or ability to directly affect those. So I, I think the effort has been working. Uh, as I stated in the past, a, a large part of enforcement, um, is making it harder to do what people have been able to do pretty easily in the past. In this case, uh, people were able to freely advertise and book short-term rentals. Uh, that is not the case today. I'm sure that we still have, um, properties that are, are not in compliance just because you can't catch everything out there. Uh, we would encourage the public to continue to be vigilant. Uh, we are really following up on these and trying to jump on them. Uh, we do have specific, um, staff who are assigned and working on this and also working to monitor, uh, the known websites where these are popping up. Uh, part of the reason why I'm pleased, uh, and, uh, are pretty pleased about our effort is that we've been able to reduce down the number of hours that we're now spending on this. Uh, it took us quite, you know, we were working 16, 20 hours a week, uh, at the beginning to get ramped up on this and just go start to go after all the lists that we had and the complaints that were still coming in. And now we've got that down where it's, you know, less than 10 hours or less than five hours a week. And really, uh, with the emphasis on this time, you know, yes, we're continuing to go after those that we, um, you know, suspect are advertising. Um, but largely it has boiled down to more of the monitoring mode at this point. Uh, and we will remain vigilant with that. Happy to answer any questions?
Quick questions?
Yep.
Have you had to resort to cease and desist action on anybody yet?
No.
No, and on that one, it would require council approval to file civil action. And we have not had a property that has been at that level yet. There's one in the works that, um, may hit that level, but the expectation is to go through the first hearing, which will be the first untested hearing on this issue. See how we come out of that, see if that's effective in securing compliance. If it isn't, then I think we'll be coming to the council in closed session and consider such a question.
And the second question is, uh, I'm pretty impressed with what you've been able to do with existing staff, Mr. McLaren. Are you telling us that you think that this is going to be able to be handled without a special independent contractor?
I think we're getting closer to that point. That's probably as much as I should say at this point.
Okay.
Have some thoughts on how we can get there, but I'll, I'll stop short of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I also just wanted to briefly mention, um, and I'm happy to provide a copy of this. This is a article that appeared, um, I believe in today or, or maybe yesterday. It was in the San Francisco Chronicle. And I'll just re, very briefly read from this. It says, "In a dramatic about-face, Airbnb says it is ready to police its San Francisco hosts, taking action, taking actions it has long resisted as invasive, unrealistic or unwieldy." Vacation rental giant told the Chronicle, "Is willing to provide all local hosts' names, addresses and guest stays as part of a mandatory registration system it would craft with the city. Once such a system exists, Airbnb would cut off listings when they hit the city's annual cap, a number of nights rented and ensure that apartments where tenants were evicted under the Ellis Act are not rented to travelers." And again, that's, that's San Francisco, not Ojai. And you can certainly read the rest of the article. It says, "The move comes as Airbnb faces, uh, two major threats to its business in its hometown." So seemed like a, a rather significant change in terms of Airbnb's position. Don't know yet what that will mean to the city of Ojai.
Relevant, and I know it's late, but this is so important. Uh, Board of Supervisors was packed with Ojai Valley residents for and against various aspects of short-term rentals, but the dial has been moved. And what was clear in testimony is that the people advocating, and this was in the unincorporated areas, and of course, we have people across the street from, you know, in, in the Arbolota, the way we have an artifact of our city limits.
Correct.
However, I was heartened that there seemed to be a consensus among the people that are wanting to continue to allow regulated, or put in rules allowing regulated STRs in the unincorporated area, that they were very, very clear on a couple of things. One, they're not even going to try and get licenses for... One, they're not even going to try and get licenses for, uh, unhosted anymore, only hosted. That was, that was heart, at least, we've moved the dial there, uh, and I, you know, that helps. Yeah, if it's going to be in the, in a corporate area, if it has to be, if it's only hosted and strictly regulated, that's better than what we got. Number two is that they, um, the Board of Supervisors and other members of the, of the testimony referenced that particular article as being critically important, because no one wants to regulate if Airbnb isn't going to want to help with the regulation. And, and so I, you know, I'm hoping that the efforts this city has taken is bearing fruit in the entire incorporated area, unincorporated area of the valley. And, uh, you know, I think things are starting to move in a good direction, even among the people that are strong advocates and are very strong, very critical of our effort to get on top of this before we do any further discussion. Even though they're very critical, everybody seems to be moving to this idea that, again, if you're going to have anything, the only thing you can have is going to be strictly regulated with cooperation from Airbnb, be home share only. So I'm hopeful that we're going to, you know, this is going to help the valleys, because other, in Ventura County, other than the beach areas, we're it. We're it. That was, again, emphatically emphasized today at Board of Supervisors.
And a brief further comment on that, the, it seems to have been the case that Airbnb's about-face with respect to San Francisco was spurred by a tentative ruling from a federal court judge in their city's challenge to, Airbnb's challenge to that city's ordinance, indicating that they were likely to rule, that Judge Chen was likely to rule that Airbnb cannot rely on the federal protections for internet service providers as a way to escape regulation of its activities. Having accomplished what appears to be a deal, we may not have a final ruling if the case dies, but it indicates where the needle is moving, so as, uh, other courts, considering the Anaheim case and the Santa Monica case, and other cases that may be filed, plus out of New York, we may see the needle move in a way where we can take advantage of provisions that we don't presently have in terms of the city's ad band without having to be the test case.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. McLaren?
I just wanted to note that, um, we're working very hard to get caught up on the minutes. We did add some minutes on the consent calendar this time, um, but we, there, there's, we're working on multiple sets at once, so, um, just want you to know, we're, we're working to try and get those forward, because we know with the change of council, um, that could affect the ability to approve some of those minutes, so.
Yeah, thank you.
That's where we're at.
I have one. Steve, is there any way on the 29th that we could have the record of all the pause that have been performed to date, and what has...
Is there, I'll repeat that, is there any way by the 29th that we could have the report on pause to date, and, um, any type of discovery or anything that we can share?
Some, some statistics in terms of, um, yeah, I think we could have that by the 29th.
Or are we coming back on the 13th to discuss the...
Be my question, Ryan.
This is questionary.
If I understand the councilmember's request, it's to have that available as you consider the question of whether to extend the out-of-committees deadline or not.
Um, that, and more importantly, is part of this, uh, of this discussion on cultural resources, the PAW would be, the PAW was put in place on ministerial so that we could create a record of discovery, so that we could bring back to council to help them to make determinations as to, um, we've done 150 of them, out of 150 of them, we've done, you know, 25 Phase Ones, we've done, you know, 22 Phase Twos, we've done 30 cases of monitoring, and we have discovered what. So I think it'd be important that we have that information as we move forward in this discussion. But do you want it, do you want it by the end of the month, when we're going to consider extending their time, or do you want it when the...
No, I'd like it to come forward when we're going to be discussing the, uh, the motion on discretionary.
Okay. So that was the 13th, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah, 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 that's fine, yeah.
All right. Mr. Summers, you have anything?
I, I have a couple more things, I, and again, these are, this thing's bothering me, I gotta get them off my chest because they've been bothering me, and for discussion with the city manager report. I am concerned, we, and I'm talking about walls and hedges, walls and fences, we passed a moratorium on enforcement for, uh, but that was, uh, back in October of 15, pending staff review of what to do about enforcing our current code. But that resolution was very precise, that it was not going to be allowing walls and fences in violation of the city zoning code going forward from October of 2015. We are seeing a proliferation of unresolved situations of people building walls and fences more than three feet in frontages in violation of the, of the zoning code, and I brought this concern to, to, to the city manager, and I'm bringing it to the council and to the public. I think we have a problem of this proliferation, we have a perception the city's not going to do anything about it, we have egregious violations that are not been resolved after many months, visually presenting to people, um, almost visual blight situations in some cases. I'm concerned about it, and, uh, I just want to raise the concern that if you, if you, if you have, um, this kind of, uh, once you let it kind of start happening without consequences, then it, it, uh, it starts to affect and undermine the character of the city, and I want to remind everybody that these, um, guidelines for frontages in terms of being a front porch city have been in place for decades, and I don't want to lose our character of our city, and I think it's, it's in threat in some, in some respects with this situation right now. So I just want to raise this concern, and I, I hope we, um, we understand that, that there is no moratorium on enforcing the current code with respect to fences and walls constructed in violation of the municipal code since 20, October of 2015, and there are numerous examples in our city right now that have been constructed since then.
We are well, staff is well aware of that, um, and, uh, there are several cases that are code enforcement cases at this time, um, and those do take time.
I know, I just, but point out, though, that the longer a high-visibility violation like that stays in place, the more others are tempted to also go be in violation. It's just the nature of how things are, you know? I'm, I constantly get people complaining about some of these high-profile situations. I'm not going to name anything in particular, it's inappropriate. I'm just going to say, in general, we have a, I think we have a problem. Okay? And again, if we're short of people, and, you know, we need to, you need to ask us about, you know, supporting on that, Mr. McLaren, but it's a, it's a growing concern of mine, you know?
Acknowledged.
You know?
My only response to that is, um, we get a lot of things assigned to us, and then before we can get back with those, we get new assignments given to us.
I understand.
And so a lot of times, we find ourselves working on urgency matters.
I understand.
And that pushes the other stuff back.
I understand.
Steve, my suggestion on that would be, let's get it back before the, the new council, because it's awful hard to enforce when you're telling somebody that if you did it before a date, we're not going to enforce it, but if you did it after a date, we are. It's very difficult to do that. Um, they're both in violation, they both should be, uh, enforced, and all, I mean, what if we decide we're never going to enforce the old ones and only the new ones? How are we going to do that?
Well, we, I, I agree, that, that, remember in October, back in October of 15, we were meant to say, all right, we need a pause here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, while we figure out what to do.
Yeah.
But we're specifically not going to say it's okay going forward.
Right.
It was mainly having to do with hedges, and what we're seeing now is a proliferation of, I think, character destroying, character threatening construction, uh, beyond what was the issue of concern to begin with.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I tend to agree with you, but I think we need to get it back before the council to say, let's lift the moratorium on enforcement and decide what we're going to do.
Okay.
I mean, that doesn't mean you don't have to, you don't have to stop any enforcement, I just find that, you know, I have a really hard time when somebody violates a code, but they do it, you know, here, and you don't do anything to them, and if they do it here, you do. I mean, it should be, if you're going to enforce it, you need to enforce it.
I agree.
And, uh, and it mainly was hedges, but I'm not thinking of anybody having planted a hedge since we did that.
I'm not, I had my own reasoning the issue of hedge.
Right.
I'm talking about fences and walls.
Right.
Because frankly, I don't want us to look like Montecito.
But when we were doing that, we included fences and walls in that moratorium, I think.
Only, uh, only for the ones already constructed.
Right.
That was back in October of 2015, and we're saying this in no way says we're going to, uh, you know, just let everybody, you know, violate the code going forward.
Right.
Actually, if you drive through Montecito and Santa Barbara, you'll see that, uh, the organic fences are the bigger issue, not the wood and the block and the...
What I mean is, you know what I'm...
But, yeah, but it's, it's organic.
I don't want to be a walled city.
Well, I think, I, I would like to see us somehow get that to come back before the new council. If we've had, if we've had a moratorium on enforcement and it's been...
When you say before the new council, you mean before the new council gets seated, or before the new council?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And it's been a while.
Because it's been 11, it's been, uh...
A year now.
13 months.
And a year now.
Yeah. My suggestion would be, add it to the priority list, and bring the priority list back to the new council, and let the council look at that as a priority and discuss it as to where they see in the, in the chain of events that they would like to tackle. That might be a better option.
But then we have to say, don't enforce it against these new ones.
No.
I mean, no, that's what we have to say, though, because why should they be wasting their time enforcing it on the new ones if we're not going to enforce it on the old ones?
Well, if you recall...
And they're old now because they're a year, over a year ago.
Well, the debate, the debate was over, the debate was mainly over the hedges, it really was not a debate that we were going to be having, you know, six-foot walls and fences on frontages.
I think this...
That was never a debate.
I think the discussion in the last few moments has shown that this issue needs more consideration than we can give it as an item, not on the agenda.
Right.
So why don't we consider putting it on the agenda for the 13th, for the new council to consider? We'll draft something that would let them be able to suspend the, we'll draft a resolution that would allow that council, if they wished that night, to suspend, to lift the moratorium suspending enforcement, but it would also allow the new council to decide if they want to do that later, or debate the issue further, or something else, but I, I really don't think you can continue to discuss it tonight.
Okay, and then, uh, one more sensitive issue to raise. This one also is bothering me. And I, and, and you can stop me, but because I, but I think it's important. And I've, we, this was raised by a constituent, and I communicated what it meant. We have an administrative interpretation of what is, what residential properties require design review permits or not, and we have an administrative interpretation by our community development director that in effect says that a storage building needs a design review permit, but the primary resident does not. Here is my concern. When I, I have a real, a real heartburn when I hear from, you know, that this kind of, this kind of interpretation happened, which is, is clearly an interpretation, I think, outside the intent of the original zoning code, puts all kinds of extra time on staff and extra expense on our citizens, and then we hear complaints about not having enough staff time to get things done, and we have, uh, extra time involved. When we have an administrative interpretation like that, that causes that large a consequence to our citizens and to the productivity of staff time, and it becomes a policy action by administrative interpretation without the knowledge of council, it's not the way the CDD should operate. And for an administrative interpretation shift like that to have been made, or in effect, you can build your house without a design review permit, but then you want to build a storage shed and you need a design review permit, it's an absurd consequence, and it's not the kind of thing, way that I would like to see the CDD operate. It's just, it's just not right. And frankly, I'd like to see it unwound and stopped right away, and it could be done by administrative interpretation, or perhaps we should look at some kind of direct action to stop it. I feel really strongly about this.
It may be the case that that assessment of the issue is shared by all the council. It may be the case that it's not shared by all the council. It is the case that it cannot be discussed in detail tonight.
No.
My suggestion would be that we put that issue...
They're raising it as a concern.
Understood. My suggestion...
It's appropriate to raise concerns for discussion.
Yes, well, not for discussion, for consideration of whether to be discussed in the future.
Right.
My suggestion was that the council direct staff to put that on the future council agenda, because the, and for those who are, there's obviously, there's a back discussion behind this. The issue is, does the design review permit section of the code tend to, 20, 2006, which requires a design review permit for all building permits except a number of exceptions, one of which is single-family, single-story residences.
And improvements.
And improvements to the...
Behind improvements broadly.
And improvements to the dwelling.
No, it doesn't say that.
So, 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 just let me interject something here.
There was a change, the change in practice and interpretation with dramatic effects on citizens, okay, done purely administratively.
As is the power as provided for by the code to the CDD, but the council has the power to change that, and that's my point. The council has the power to change that by changing the code or adopting, adopting an interpretation of the code or else changing the code, but that has to be done on an agenda with the full council considering the question.
I would think that any interpretation of any ordinance that expands someone's ability to increase fees should be brought before council, period. So when that interpretation was done, and there's an increase in fees now, they've gone beyond the realm of interpreting. Now they are created, they're writing policy or, or enacting policy, and I think that that, that's the issue there.
And a dramatic increase in staff time, and a dramatic delay in permit processing, and a dramatic increase in cost.
And all of these points speak clearly to the issue that it requires full consideration by the council.
Great.
I, I think we understand what the concern is. It's, I just want to point out, it's, it's 12:07. I'm not prepared to respond to this tonight, I, I, you know, we can't do anything with it right now. I'm not sure what we can do at this point. If council wants to bring it back, we'll, we'll bring it back.
You want to...
The only question is, would you, it sounds like we should add this to a, a meeting soon for the new council.
Yeah, but I'm not sure it needs to be on the very first meeting.
I think that meeting may be full.
I mean, that first meeting seems like it's going to be pretty full. I mean, we don't want, we don't want everything, you know, I mean, but it, we need to get it on an agenda, okay?
But it's not the way that this should happen. I just feel really strongly about that. It's just not the way staff should operate.
And I'm not prepared to respond to that tonight.
Oh, that's my feeling, that's my conviction.
I understand.
And it's okay for me to make a public comment like that.
It is very much okay for the council member to make that comment, um, and it can be considered by the council in full in future, and we will bring it forward when we can.
Oh, you got more?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Um, Mr. Summers, you have anything?
Nothing further, thank you.
Chief?
No.
All right. Amber, you got anything for us?
No.
All right. Nothing to come before us, we're adjourned.